Hey, I'd like to call the meeting of the Willets City Council of June 14, 2017, to order. And I pledge allegiance. Mrs. Berry, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to call, Kat?
Council members, we're present. Strong?
Here.
Hornstein?
Here, Borna.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Here. All right. Public communications. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition when every group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter. The mayor may request that his spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No actions shall be taken. Do we have any public communication? If you could state your name.
Larry Desmond. I can talk and write at the same time. Thank you for having me. I'm glad to be here. I was with John Sherman the other day. I'm representing a small group, five people, that have offered to help the city, you know, clean up trashy areas, graffiti, on a monthly basis, whatever we need, whatever the city needs. I was surprised with, John and I went out Monday, and we didn't, to our amazement, there was no concentration of trash or places that needed attention. But overall, and this is mostly relating to Caltrans, but the south part of the town west, I'm sorry, south of Highway 20, I would just urge the city to contact Caltrans. Demand as best you can that they come and do their part in cleaning the weeds out, sweeping the roads and stuff. With 4th of July coming in a few weeks, which is our biggest celebration, it just looks, it doesn't look great, our town. And I want to salute the businesses that do put a lot of effort out to clean the place up. And the owners and businesses that don't, I don't know what to say. Somehow, we need, I know John's putting out letters to them and contacting them, but like, we're just too, to one area, it'd be like Pete's Chinese Food area, there's that big planter outside, and it's just full of weeds just draping over. But it's like, if you come into that part of the town, it's really a focal. So if he can take some of that nasty stuff out, clean the town up, and Caltrans would be doing part of that, that'd be great. So it's just an encouragement, a letter. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Ruby Petchuk. I kind of second what he's saying. But I noticed the other day that a new sign went up in front of my building, camping sign. And, well, number one, I don't really like it there because of my building. But for 17 years, I've watched people with trailers and campers pull down that road. And it looks like, it looks like it's sending them down Oak Street, if you're going south. And it doesn't make sense. I mean, I'm looking, I think it would make more sense to move that sign up above the Highway 20 sign. But it's very, very dangerous for those people to pull down there. The neighbors get really pissy on Oak Street when the trailers get down there, they can't get out, they can't get turned around. It's, you know, it's a dead-end street. And...
Is this that Caltrans sign?
Mm-hmm.
Caltrans?
It says camping, K-O-A, three miles, but I think if you're going south, you're gonna think you turned down Oak Street.
Yeah.
You know, it's just kind of odd. But anyway, maybe guys could take a look at that and think about moving it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I just respond to the comments about the town needing to be cleaned up? We are aware of that, and we have already reached out to Caltrans, as well as another sweeping service to come in and just get things cleaned up in time for the Frontier Days. And then, as well, staff is working on a letter that we're gonna send out to the newspapers, basically reminding folks of, you know, keeping things clean and signs taken down timely and all of that.
What about the camping sign? Were you planning on taking any action on that?
I think that, I'll let Dusty speak to that. He's been dealing with all of the signage issues.
Yeah, go ahead. If you have something on that.
Dusty, Julie's his planner. We're still waiting for a number of logo signs to be put up on the highway. Caltrans has been able to put the logo sign for camping, in which this case, we've got K-O-A Campground on Highway 20. So we have a sign in both directions that's been put up to let, to direct folks to the K-O-A Campground. Unfortunately, Caltrans doesn't work with, with your staff when picking out those types of locations. So I understand, I heard that because of the location, folks may choose to turn down Oak Street rather than going down Highway 20. So we'll have a conversation with Caltrans next week, and we'll see if there's an opportunity maybe to move that sign further away from Oak Street, but before the Highway 20 intersection, so.
If not, we can always move ourselves after relinquishing it, because that will be our street.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure the rules on that, if they still maintain authority, but that sounds right.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's still Caltrans street, but after they relinquish it, it's gonna be our street. We can put the sign anyplace we want to put it.
Yeah, yeah. We'll try, so we'll still try to work with them to see if we can move it and avoid that confusion. And just to be clear, did we, have we witnessed people going down Oak Street yet? Or is that just a concern that we have?
I was up building for 17 years, and for some reason, they always seem to turn down there.
Okay.
But I, you know, I talked to several people on the street when I was down playing around the restaurant then, and I said, "What do you think about this sign?" And they go, "That's kind of ridiculous."
They have over the years, just from my experience with the PD, on occasion you'll get the person who gets lost and goes down there, turns there first because they thought on their GPS or whatever it meant that street, so.
It doesn't seem the way...
It is a strange placement.
My fir-, yeah, my first thought when I saw that sign was, I felt, even though it was a vacant building, you would hope that a future business would go in there, and I felt that the sign kind of invaded the business space there, so I would hope that maybe we could find another spot for, although I was glad to see another sign as well.
Right, right.
Just not right regarding your, that business run through the door, I think, is right for the door.
This close, you've got this close.
Jury.
Larry, we on the corner from Mendocino to the parking lot, my wife and I and the owner of the, of the other store, the video store, Pete, we cleaned that during the holiday. And we took two of the green barrels full of stuff just out of the curb. So I want you to know that there are people out there that are doing that. And it's, you know, and you go back two weeks later and it's just full. I mean, it's just from debris.
Yep. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Public Matters, 3A, proclamation designating Western Wear Days, June 23rd to July 4th, 2017.
Western Days?
Yeah. Proclamation of the Willets City Council Designating Western Wear Days, 91st Anniversary, June 23rd through July 4th, 2017. Whereas the Willets Frontier Days is the oldest continuous rodeo in the state of California, and this year, Willets Western Small Town America 2017 marks the 91st, or 90, 90?
91st, I guess.
And anniversary of the Willets Frontier Days, which still continues to draw people from all over to come and not only celebrate Independence Day, but to celebrate as a community. And whereas each year, this event is run solely by volunteers with many hours dedicated to putting together this traditional event. And whereas this annual community event instills great pride in all of us who can call Willets home, past and present. Now therefore, I, Gerardo Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Willets, do hereby proclaim June 23rd through July 4th, 2017, as Western Wear Days in the City of Willets and encourage all who enter our community to join us in the rodeo spirit by wearing western apparel. And witness whereof, I have unto heritage, hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Willets to be affixed on this 14th day of June, 2017. We have fun.
Thank you. Is this the famous blackboard?
All right, is that time again? Big ol' western howdy to everybody. There we go, one more time. Everybody's gonna come out and celebrate our freedom and support our democracy and a celebration that only in Willets is gonna be so good. 93 years of that, so I'd like to start with, these are just invitations, these are not bribes, these are actually invitations for everybody to be at all of our events.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so 91 years, it's a long time. So it was way back when a bunch of folks came together to, they were having a rodeo anyway, and they just figured that they could make a little money and support local causes like the hospital and the fire department, and lo and behold, those things happened. And for all those years since, Frontier Days has been giving back to the community with scholarships and benefits to other, you know, youth organizations and stuff. So we're all volunteer over all the years. We're really, really proud of that. But as you know, after that length of time, there's always some, some downfalls. And so unfortunately, this year, we lost our dear friend Harold Potter, who was a great service to us at the Frontier Days. And so that was, it's been, that's been hard. And then, with all the rains and such, a couple of big trees came down and smashed right through our grandstands. So major setback. But with all incredible help from our volunteers and the guidance of Mr. Fred Berry and Marcy and everybody at Frontier Days and so much other, and especially the City of Willets to help us out. We were gonna have these things ready to go, and they're gonna be new and improved. So the benefit has been that we now have handicap access or strollers, anything you want to wheel on up there, you've got great seats for the rodeo, so it's gonna work out okay. So anyway, you know, it's, it's my duty here to remind everybody about the importance of western wear. And I see a little bit of it here, so, and I'll get into a little bit more of that in a little bit. But just to, just to show you firsthand how good you can look with western wear, I'd like to have our sweetheart contestants come on up here and introduce themselves. They're practicing, and they like to show it off a little bit and tell them all about it, so come on up. Aren't they pretty?
Put us to shame.
Hi, my name's Haley Riley. I'm 19. I'm attending Mendocino College to get my degree in Allied Health Program, and I'm going to double major in kinesiology. And I'm also attending this summer at the San Rosa Junior College, a radiology technology program. I've been riding horses for over 10 years now, and I am running for the 2017 Willets Frontier Day Sweetheart. If you need any tickets or anything, let me know.
Hi, my name is Keely Aders. I'm 17 years old, and I'm also running for the Willets Frontier Day Sweetheart. I have just recently graduated from the New Horizons Independent Study Program, and I've been taking college classes for a while. I'm working on a health science and a business administration degree to later become either a veterinarian or a doctor. I have been riding horses since I was five, so about 12 years. And I am a born and raised Willets girl. And if you, anyone needs tickets, I have that, and I also have business cards. Thank you.
How about that? They sure are pretty. So that's, that's how good you can look with western wear. So I encourage everybody else to do the same. Of course, the results may have, may be veritable, so, yes, can't be guaranteed. So we've got a big, big show coming up here, and so just to remind you, starting on the June 23rd, we're having truck pulls, which is, we usually pack the stands. If you haven't tried it, you come on down and see it. It's a, it's a spectacular show. And afterwards, we have our famous dance out there, which is always fun. So let's see, we're gonna have the sweetheart judging on the 24th. And then on the 25th, we'll be having a horse show. And on the 30th, since Marcy didn't have enough to do, we've taken over the hometown celebration. And it's gonna be quite a celebration indeed. We're gonna have over 40 booths, probably about 12 musical acts, and it's really gonna be something. So come on down and meet your friends and neighbors there. There's gonna be a lot of folks out for that one. So on the 1st of July, we'll crown our sweetheart, one of these beautiful girls. We'll get the tiara, and so that will be fun. So anyway, and then we have on the 3rd, we have our nighttime rodeo, which is very nice, always very pleasant, it's not too hot. And also a dance after that, because you can't get too much dancing. So and then on the 4th, of course, we start with the parade, which is, is really good. Get on down there and get your, get your spot early. And so I'll be handing out flags for that, and you'll see everybody you know. So then we'll have the barbecue, our world-famous barbecue, and I will be hosting the rodeo la, a music, country music act. So we'll have a little toe-tapping stuff while you enjoy the barbecue. And then, of course, we'll have the rodeo, so we want to see you all there. So, so you know how important it is to get your western wear, because it just makes you look good. And everybody should have it, and there's plenty of places in town to get it, too. You don't, there's no excuse for not having it. So my recommendation would be, start with the hat and work on down. And by the time you get to your shoes, your boots, you'll have enough confidence to go out and do what needs to be done. Western wear, try some today. Thank you.
Well, as Jeff mentioned, we had a bit of an unexpected situation with the grandstands being damaged. And that happened back in December. And it initially seemed like it was gonna be easy enough to get this resolved well before Frontier Days. And it hasn't been so easy. It's been a real nail-biting experience. I'm sure a few sleepless nights and pulling one's hair out for several of us. But I just wanted to say how much I appreciate Marcy and Fred and the entire board, which includes Kathy and all of your volunteers for just sticking with it and hanging in there with us as we get this, you know, got this work through. So I think we're all looking forward to a great event this year, and I'm glad to put the other stuff behind us.
I, I like to take this opportunity, since Jeff brought that up, to thank Frontier Days for stepping up with the hometown affair. With Lynn Cannelly's passing, that, that really threw everything into a kilter. And we really appreciate the fact that you guys were willing, like Jeff said, with nothing else to do that week, to step up. So thank you very much.
And I know you're a bunch of volunteers, so we appreciate it.
I'm Fred Berry. The president is here. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all your help. It means a lot. This Friday, they're gonna be paving there, so there will be traffic, so you're aware of that. So, but thank you.
Well, I thought Marcy was passing the torch, but it didn't go too far. All right.
I don't know everybody's name who's sitting in the audience, and I know you all work real hard. Would it be possible for, to have you come up and maybe just quickly tell us your name and how long you've been with the Frontier Days, or why you're a part of the Frontier Days?
How about you, in place?
Cory.
Well, this is Coy on the end down here, and of course, you know, Fred and Marcy.
25 years, volunteer. 30.
Gina, we've got Tracy at the back, Karen, and we all kind of, kind of like to leave a low profile, but they do so much work, and it takes, you know, it really takes all of us to get it going. And so we're really, we're really proud of what we do, so. Taking shows, and everybody's gonna appreciate it when they're talling out and having a good time. We want to see everybody smiling and having a good time, so, thanks.
Faces behind the hard work. Thank you.
All right. Well, we are now on item 3B, Notice of Public Hearing, Discussion on Possible Adoption of Resolution Approving Changes in Certain Fees and Charges. Suzie, take it away. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there were a few changes that were recommended this year by department heads. Starting on page one, with the police service fees. The charges were changed from per page to per report to make it easier for the dispatchers and those working in the police department. When someone comes in for copies of reports, that they have to sometimes do a bill and doing a bill for 75 cents and then waiting for that check to come in, and so, and then sometimes it was more. But it was just easier to do a $5 flat fee.
Well, on that subject, the rule is that your fees can only cover expenses. I mean...
The cost.
Yeah, does that, you know, this flat fee, does that carry a problem with it because of that?
No. No, because...
I mean, we can justify a $5...
Just with your labor costs, you could justify that. And then we did, we, so because of that, we changed the copies of the documents provided in response to Public Records Act, because that one, you cannot add your labor into it, and we said we added that charge. So anything that's related to that would be 25 cents per page.
I, I have a lot of questions on these things, if you don't mind. I'm gonna jump in.
Go ahead. See if I can.
On the item, fingerprint cards only, it was $12 for three cards, and now it's $20 for up to two cards.
It was supposed to be $12 each, not EA3.
Okay, okay, so it was $12 each, and now you can get up, up to two cards for $20. Gotcha.
You, I believe you pay, is it 12 or 15 to have, for rolling?
I don't know.
So it's not more, that's the point. Okay.
They're, they're, they go off of a penal code, and we can only go up to a certain amount, so whatever that is.
I was gonna suggest that when you have to mail either a CD or a DVD, that we add maybe even $3 instead of only one, because just the postage alone is $2 to mail a CD. And that doesn't count, you know, addressing it.
So your police chief and his staff went through these carefully and came up to the, you know, with these recommendations, and I'm, I'm confident that they factor in everything they needed to.
Yeah, it's not gonna amount to much revenue anyway, so, I did, but I don't think that's really covering the actual costs myself.
I also want to add that up above where it says penalty assessment match, brought to my attention that it says 2 cents. It's supposed to be 2%. The formatting was changed, but it should be 2% per month is the penalty assessment on all delinquent accounts.
Oh, okay.
Question, Public Works, it says pavement patch. You mean that to somebody in front of your house, if that is a pothole, you have to pay the hundred bucks to get it built?
I, I don't really, I don't really know what that means. I'm sorry. That's a public question for Public Works.
Are we getting iteration?
Two. It's on page two.
It's on page two?
I would assume, you know, if, if, if somebody had to dig into our street and we had to plug it up.
I always thought that, that we just did it as a city, but I don't know, obviously.
Yeah, I would think that if, for example, I'm constructing something and I get my permit, but then we end up cutting into the street, you know, not the city, but the contractor.
These are permit fees, too, by the way. So it's a permit fee to release.
That's right.
Suzie, on that page, at the top, the police service fees. This has not been changed. It's carried over from last year. But the vehicle storage fee at the police department is $25 a day. That doesn't seem like an awful lot. I mean, is that enough to cover, I mean, there's gonna be, I'm sure there's some kind of, of activity that has, you know, they have to watch the car or whatever. And there's also liability insurance on top of, I mean, is, is $25?
Maybe I could speak to that wrong. The reason we threw that in there years ago is that every once in a while, a vehicle ends up getting towed to the police department for evidence or whatever, and at a certain point, you release it. And some people, I'd say 99% of the people want their car back right away, and there's not an issue of it being stored there. But every once in a while, people just leave it, or some other agency, you know, like, maybe you rented the car and Enterprise is leaving it in the back. There's no incentive for you to come get it. And so the idea is that if we didn't charge something, they would kind of feel free to leave it there for a while.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning the fact that there is a charge. I'm questioning if, if the charge is enough to cover the cost.
I don't think it happens that often, that's the thing.
Yeah, but still, is it enough to cover the cost?
And again, I don't.
Have you done a, I don't know, we're not talking about that much anyway, but I mean, it might be worthwhile to take a look at it and see, you know, what's involved with storing vehicles. Because it is a responsibility.
These, these fees, just so that we're all clear, come from the specific department. They, because they're the ones that know.
I understand.
Yeah.
But here we are, looking at the fees and saying, they work, they don't work. So that's why, whether you're the one who's gonna answer the question or the PD, you know, whatever, but I think it's worth an answer.
Well, again, the, the police chief did review all of the fees and made changes that he felt needed to be changed. He definitely had in mind making sure costs were covered. And so he isn't here tonight, but I'm, I'm, I feel confident that he is covering the cost of things in these fee recommendations.
I had a question, too. On the bottom of page one, it has the towing fee of $65. It doesn't, it's not clear that if you tow it and then you're keeping it for a week or whatever, it doesn't get claimed, there would be a per day. Is that the 25?
Well, that's a, that's just the towing fee you charge to cover administrative costs. So let's, and, and the actual vehicle doesn't get stored at the PD, it actually gets stored at the tow yard. So if you get stopped and arrested, and let's say your car was parked in front of a jack-in-a-box and we couldn't be left there, it gets towed and stored, and one of the local tow companies comes, picks it up, hauls it to their yard, they're charging the storage fees. The $65 was just to compensate the city for processing the paperwork.
Doesn't even cover the towing itself.
No, towing, you, you actually, as the individual, pay that and the storage fees of the tow company.
Okay, got it. Good.
We get to go to page three. On page three, the changes were to the Community Development Department. And the goal here was to take the major projects, the things that took the most time, and change those from being a flat fee to a cost recovery with a deposit. So instead of having a $1,000 charge for a general plan amendment, amendment, we would change that to be a $1,000 deposit, but we would be cost recovery. And, and at the point that we've reached, it looks like that's not gonna be enough. We would ask for... ask for more money and if that, if there's, if it doesn't use a thousand dollars, then we would return the difference.
So, this line item, zone change included with general plan amendment is blank, it says it was two hundred fifty dollars. What you're saying is that the zone change is now gonna be covered in the line below where it says cost recovery.
Right.
Okay.
I wondered if under use permit, the last one is planned unit development, and that one is not a cost, cost recovery, it's five hundred dollars, but that frequently, those are fairly major and it seems to me that should be a five hundred deposit and a cost recovery like the other ones are. I think the other ones, negative deck category, those are sort of routine, but PUD can be pretty, am I right?
Maybe we could have Dusty come up and, and explain his recommendations.
Come on up.
Here, just before the meeting, I actually just created a quick cost comparison between the applications we're recommending for cost recovery and what some of our surrounding jurisdictions do for the same application, so, just quickly hand those out. Yes, as Suzie correctly said, the department's looking to recover costs on, on some of our, our major project applications. We have a, a number of, of project applications where the cost of processing the application, including going through the environmental review process, and then, again, even after a project's approved, there's a matter of, of ensuring compliance with the conditions of approval. All of that ends up far exceeding the cost of the application. So, what we tried to do is, is separate out those, those types of projects that, that tend to lend to, you know, sixty to eighty to a hundred hours of staff time and, and not only the community development department, but working with other, other city departments to get recommendations, to respond to project referrals, the administrative costs, Kathy signs others to, to do various activities, you know, where, again, you know, these major projects that, that can be, tend to be time consuming for, for your staff versus, you know, maybe what you would call the mom and pop application, someone's just looking to get a zoning permit or a simple use permit for a standard appropriate project where, you know, either probably the application doesn't recover the cost of services, but, you know, it's something close, it's close to it. Whereas, these other types of applications that people are going for tend to, to result in, you know, a significant help for them. So, for instance, you're going for a, a general plan amendment rezone that rezones your property to something that, that creates a lot more value for it. You know, feel, feel better about getting cost recovery on those types of applications versus some of the smaller mom and pop type applications. And I, I would say planned development's another one where if you're going for that type of, of application, there probably is a major project involved and you could expect, you know, significant staff time to be spent on, on, on that.
So, would you, would you be agreeable and would the staff be agreeable to making that a five hundred deposit with the cost recovery like the other ones, the other more major projects are? I just, planned unit development might cost a lot more than five hundred dollars if it's a big...
Oh, yeah, guaranteed, yeah.
Yeah, and the, the way this is written now, that's just a flat five hundred and that's it.
Right, and I'm aware that we have cost recovery on any of our applications at the moment.
So, is that, is that agreeable to...
So, which one were you looking at again?
Under use permit, in the sort of two-thirds of the way down, page three.
Yeah.
The fourth one is planned unit development and I'm suggesting that that one be changed to a five hundred deposit plus the cost recovery approach.
But how would that impact, how would that impact people who are submitting an application?
They would, instead of paying a five hundred dollar flat fee for staff to spend an average of sixty hours, they'd now be paying, you know, you keep track of whatever staff's working on the project, we, we have full cost recovery, so, you know, we're aware of what the city pays to us for our jobs, but, and then you essentially give them a bill. It took, took me, took staff sixty hours to process this application, this is what the hourly rates are for your staff, and, and the bill goes out.
Do you think though that it would discourage any, any potential people that were looking to do a project? Because I, as a business owner, this is, this is a variable. And when I'm figuring out my costs on a project, I wanna know, you know, you always have your variable costs and you have your fixed costs, and anytime there's a variable, then you're always winning whether or not you, you wanna do a project. And you work with people who are doing those types of, kinds of projects every day, what do you feel, how do you think people are gonna receive if we made a change like that? Is that significant? Is it very, very small? Do you think it would have any change?
My, my experience with the county, I worked there for ten years and we went to cost recovery for, for, you know, more applications than what we're recommending here and I didn't see any slowdown in, in the number of those types of applications being received. I think what I did notice though is, you know, when you ended up seeing more realistic projects being proposed, whereas now, you know, you're gonna charge one thousand two hundred fifty dollars for a general plan amendment rezone and, and push that sixty to a hundred plus hours of time on the staff, well, if I'm looking at it and I go, well, I got maybe a five percent chance of this getting approved, but for twelve hundred fifty bucks, I'm willing to go ahead and take the, take a chance, you know, then you, you've essentially locked up your limited amount of staff resources on the application that's unlikely to be approved because it's inconsistent with general plan and other, you know, regulations. So, I think by, by going to cost recovery, similar to what City of Cuyahoga, County Amendocino, Fort Bragg, and, and many other jurisdictions up and down the state do, you tend to get folks that, you know, try to, to go for, for more realistic type projects and, you know, those that hopefully we can find a way to support it, assuming they're appropriate. So, one benefit of going to this could potentially be that you help ensure that you're getting sensible projects being proposed. And I do anticipate getting a number of these types of applications. Annexations is on there. City of, City Willis is in a great position, thanks to past leadership, where we have water and sewer resources. Well, I could see situations where developments start to pop up around the city, but they're gonna need to rely on city water and sewer connections in order to support, you know, those developments and that's gonna require annexations into the city limits. So, again, there is a benefit where an applicant's potentially looking at, you know, a, a great reward for going through this application process and then the city's only recouping five hundred dollars or, you know, a thousand dollars. So, in those situations, the, the cost recovery situation, I doesn't, don't think thwarts that development, you know?
Magenta question.
Yeah, I think you already mentioned it too, but in, in almost all these situations, including the planned unit development, which is why I think it's applicable there, is that the applicant is going to enhance their property value and their return on their investment very substantially in those situations. So, the amount of the fee is a real small percent of their total development cost. So, if they have a good project, then it's worth it to them to pay the staff what they're worth to process that because they're gonna get a really substantial project out of it.
So, for instance, with like a minor subdivision, you're trying to split off a parcel so that you can build a house for your family, mother, mom, or son, that's, that cost will stay the same, but when you're looking to subdivide and create twenty, thirty, forty parcels, that, that cost the application probably isn't gonna thwart that, that level of development.
And Dusty, speaking towards like what Sabrina was talking about, let's say I come in and, I'm sure you're used to dealing with some folks that come in with everything, maybe they have a consultant already coming in and things right in line with what they need to do and they probably have a pretty good idea as to how much staff time they're gonna use versus someone like me comes in and says, hey, I wanna do X, Y, Z, I'm gonna presume you're gonna educate me and say, you know, this is what you, you know, you're gonna probably send me off with a homework list or tell me maybe you need to engage a professional on this because I think you're in over your head or, I'm assuming you'd have those sort of conversations with people.
Yeah, I'm a little bit careful about, you know, recommending someone, you know, hire a consultant, but certainly have enough experience where we can provide a time estimate, you know, essentially like if you're able to get this information together for us, you know, this, you know, probably expect, you know, forty to, you know, fifty hours of, of staff time in order to, to process your application. And then there's also an incentive then for the applicant, or we have some folks where you, you end up having the same conversation several times, whereas maybe a more sophisticated developer is able to minimize, you know, that repetitive conversations or whatever. So, there's an opportunity for the applicant to be efficient and, and reduce the cost of their own application.
I think you make a really big point.
Anybody else have questions, or Dusty? Otherwise, thank you, Dusty, and keep going.
On to page five. That finishes up the community development department and there's two other projects on there that we would like to change to cost recovery and deposit. The red items below define cost recovery and cost for staff time and it also includes that if we outsource to a contract agency, that we would charge the amount that the city's charged.
This, check your, your, your...
Application.
Smithing, in that paragraph, it says cost recovery and explains it?
Yes.
There's a few, did you spot them?
I spotted two.
Okay.
Don't you got? On page six, we're changing the amounts that we're charging for the negative declaration and mitigated negative declaration fee and the EIR fee. These are set by the state, so we're just following that.
Set by the state?
Yeah.
With no regard to cost or anything, I mean, how do they, well, it doesn't matter I guess.
Fish and wildlife is, is the department, maybe I should say that.
I wanted to ask Dusty, if the fifteen dollars for a general plan document and fifteen dollars for zoning ordinance and, and, well, for that matter, ten dollars for housing, is that sufficient to actually cover the cost of...
No, probably not. It'd probably be closer to double what those fees are, yeah.
Because, again, if someone walks in and says, I want a copy of your general plan or I want a copy of your zoning, the zoning ordinance is pretty hefty, I think, so...
A lot of those documents are a hundred to a hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah, I just, I think that we should charge what it costs us at least to Xerox than if not the, the staff time.
Are they available online?
I was just about to mention, yeah, we're gonna be working with a webmaster, I don't know if that's the right term, but a group that develops webpages and our first request is gonna be to get all of our, our plans in, online so that folks, if they can't afford the fee, can, can at least go online and print out a copy of theirselves, review them.
But in, in the spirit of trying to cover our costs, I think we should kind of estimate how many pages that is and make a...
What page is that?
It's at the bottom of page five.
Does anybody know how much it costs at the library to make copies off their computer? Just, just wondering, is it the guideline?
Fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents? Per copy?
Private business is twelve cents.
So, a hundred pages would be twelve dollars, right? So, this is in line. Okay.
But the zoning ordinance might be more than a hundred. Anyway, just, just wanted you to bear that in mind. Especially if it's available online and...
You're looking at, you're looking at pennies.
I know.
I figured they, they put some thought into this, they made their recommendations and for the most part, we need to trust that they know what they're doing. I don't wanna nickel and dime everything.
That's true. Amount of hell of beans. Thanks for the perspective.
Back on page six, now we're looking at city facilities, page six and seven, and we're removing the council chambers because we don't rent this area. And we're also removing the rodeo grounds because we don't rent those either, that's not ours tonight.
On, on that, park fees for Rec Grove, where am I saying that?
It's on, on the pa, oh, page seven.
Right under the red rodeo grounds.
We don't have colored copies.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Oh, it's not colored on there.
Yeah, there's no colors.
Sorry.
I see, I saw that, but I'm not finding one.
It's at the bottom, park fees, we deleted rodeo, then Rec Grove, and then Ballfields.
Okay, includes use of hut and stage. Is this the, the hut that we signed over to the scouts?
No, that's the...
That's the octagon hut that is on here.
The hut is where they serve some of the food.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, the, the kitchen thing?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
And then, there were no other changes except on page thirteen, which is the water service connection fees, the capital improvement fees. These were increased to be closer to the wastewater capital improvement fees and also to reflect closer to what other agencies in our area are doing. So, each one was increased by a thousand dollars. It's a one-time fee, it's when you're building and you, and you buy the meter to be installed.
The, I have a question about the sewer special fees and particularly the septic charges. And I see, we're showing the charge per load and then there's an additional charge per gallon. How is this measured?
How is...
I mean, okay, what is a load? What constitutes a load?
However many times you come.
I'm sorry?
However many times you come to this, to the plant.
No, what is a load?
Depends, every, a, a load is...
Well, but I mean, there's different sized trucks.
Yeah.
We don't measure it like that.
It goes by visit to the...
Okay, so it doesn't matter what size...
However many times you come, that's a load.
Okay, no matter how, how, how big the load is.
Right.
And then, when you get down to the per gallon charge, how is that determined? And when it is that...
There's a meter.
There's a meter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, in other words, if you come here with a load, no matter how big you dump it...
Yeah.
Where does the per gallon charge come in? I mean, does that come, if they come back again or if someone comes in with buckets of stuff?
We build them based on how, how many, so the septic receiving station has...
Measures it.
Yeah.
It measures how much is being...
Yeah, kinda like a gas station but reversed.
What I'm asking is, you have a per load charge and, and the per load charge is irrespective of the size of the vehicle, the tank that's holding it.
Right.
So, they're all the same. So, that, that's that, but where does the per gallon charge come in?
That's an additional charge.
And how is that made additional? I mean, if the guy overflows or something?
No.
No, so you drive in, you get charged your thirty dollars and then you hook up and the meter's calculating.
Yeah, okay, that, that answers that. Okay, so basically, the per load is the gate fee.
Yeah.
For coming into the property and then the charge starts with the per gallon.
Right, yes. And my question was, how come Leachate and Industrial are point oh four per gallon, but septic is point one eight five? It's quite a huge difference in the per gallon cost. Is that because, I don't, the nature of the stuff being unloaded?
I believe it's because of the amount, the chemicals that are needed for those two versus the septic.
I'm sure they looked at that, it's just, it's such a, it's a real big difference in...
We actually did a two eighteen study and that's where these come from, just so you're aware.
Well, just for clarification, because maybe it's me, but could you change the, the term per load to something like, to reflect, you know, what it actually is, which is basically a gauge fee? Because when, when I read per load, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm reading, that is the amount of stuff that you...
Includes the...
Yeah, includes the, the stuff.
Per visit?
Per visit or gate fee or, or... Just to make it clear that the per load charge is the price you pay for driving onto the property, which doesn't sound as good as per load charge, but, but maybe a better word.
You know, our, our charges have to reflect the reasonable cost of the service that we provide and actually driving onto the property is not an expense to the... And actually, driving onto the property is not an expense to the cities. This is intended to be like a base fee, right? A base charge for the overall expense of depositing.
Well, it would be like with the water and sewer charges. We have a base fee that everybody pays, and then they pay a fee above that for their usage. So this is actually the same thing, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure how it was calculated as to why this is an appropriate base charge or gate fee, if you will, but.
Well, because I'm assuming that you drive in with your truck, and I'm assuming somebody there has to kind of check you in, or at least say, "Yeah, that's Jerry's Septic Service." And then somebody at the office has to calculate that.
Well, we don't have, you know, the septic tollers are a handful compared to all of our residential water and sewer customers. And this is the terminology that they are accustomed to.
Okay, so no, I'm the only one in the world that has confusion on this?
I can call it a load fee instead of per load.
Yeah, whatever. I mean, it's just, I just get this crazy. I like to understand English.
Get your septic truck, then you won't.
I'll read about it.
Any others?
No, this page.
Okay, which page is?
Page ten.
Okay.
There is strength factors, and this explains the whole thing. So I guess my question is, how is that determined? And wait, this is not for septic, is it? This is for?
This is for sewer.
This is for the sewer stuff. So is there a mechanism for determining the strength as it comes into the sewer plant? But it can't be because you don't know what's coming from.
I believe, no, we know, we know. So like laundry mats are a higher strength, and so we know what they're discharging into the sewer.
So at some point, you have to go, or your sewer people have to go to the business to make a determination of what they're going to be putting into the sewer system.
I believe, I don't know that somebody actually goes to the, but I believe based on the business type.
Okay. And again, this is standard accepted.
Yep.
And I know we've had this forever.
Yeah.
But, you know.
And these rates are also set by the 218 rate study.
Okay.
It takes different amount of time to break it down so that you can use it so we can go through the plan.
No, I understand that, and I'm not questioning that. What I'm questioning is, how do you know if this guy is sending in low stuff and this guy is sending a high concentration? You know, how do you know who's, because it all comes in the same pipe. So at some point.
Based on the type of.
So it's based on the type, so there's a standard.
Industry.
Category, industry standard.
Yes. All right. Next question?
Yeah, on, I'm not sure what page it is, general fund admin charges?
That's the first page.
That's the first page?
I think so.
Page two, I guess. No, no, it's below.
Page two.
Two of two. I think it's after the thirteen pages.
Aren't there business licenses?
Oh, it's the.
Yeah, it's after thirteen of thirteen.
The attachment A.
Okay.
Attachment A.
So, again, this is something we've had on the books for forever. But it kind of, you know, all of a sudden, you get an aha moment. And I'm looking at business license fees, and you have a list of, you know, the flat rate, you know, auctioneer, peddler, blah, blah, blah. So that raised the question. And I'm not questioning the fees or anything like that, but for example, what exactly is a peddler?
We have had people come into town pushing carts, selling produce, going door to door to sell.
Vacuum cleaners.
Vacuum cleaners.
Okay.
So they're not, they don't have a permanent location for a business. They're peddling their wares.
And is this the same as a solicitor, someone who comes around and knocks on doors and want to vacuum your carpet or something?
Well, you got the Kirby guy that does that, and then I'm assuming you have the guy that wants to sell you magazines.
Yeah, we don't have rugs. But, I mean, these are the people we're talking about, correct?
Yes.
And the implication here is that when someone knocks on your door, they want to clean your carpets, they have to have a license.
Yes.
So this is more like a public service announcement more than anything, because from time to time, we get people knocking at the door. And they say, "Let me come in. I want to show you this. I want to show you that." And because I'm such a nice guy, I don't threaten them with arrest because they don't have a peddler's license. But, you know, there are a lot of residents in this town, especially older folks, who can feel victimized if someone comes to their door and wants to come in and clean their carpet. I'm not sure what I'm saying here, but maybe you guys, you know, and the press can sort of publicize that. If someone knocks on your door, you don't know who they are, and they want to sell you something, question them.
That's compared to the city business license.
I've had three experiences outside of the office setting where I've encountered peddlers or solicitors. And I've asked, you know, "Do you have your license from the city?" They don't know who I am, you know? And in one case, it was somebody going around town to paint the reflective numbers on the house numbers on the curbs. Good idea. I asked if they had a license. They said they didn't need one. I said, "Well, I think you might be wrong about that." They said that they were working in conjunction with our local police department, so I questioned that. And then I finally revealed that I was the city manager and probably knew.
Someone running down.
Right.
I mean, I enjoy telling people like that no, and just thwarting their arguments. But I mean, an easier way to do it, obviously, is to question their credentials and why are they there? So, I mean, I think it would be a public service if we let the public know that they don't have to even talk to these people, you know, challenge them.
And to be fair, not everyone is aware. I mean, some of these peddlers are just completely unaware that they would, because I don't think all communities require such a license, but a lot do.
And some people I've encountered have gotten a county license and then take that to mean they're good all over the county. I used to sit there when they would come to my house and point to the patrol car and say, "What does that license plate say? California exempt. Do you know what that means?" And then I'd say, "I'm the police chief, and guess what? We need this." And we'd have a little conversation, and they, and I gotta tell you, sometimes they had cool stuff they wanted to sell. And I said, "Look, you're putting me between a rock and a hard place because I kind of like what you're selling, but I don't want to buy it because you're breaking the law."
And that's all I'm saying, is that we need to make the public aware that they do have an option, and they don't have to be, I mean, you know, it's bad enough to have these telemarketers calling you dinnertime or whenever, but something like this, having someone knock on your door, you know, when you have your shoes off, it.
We do have a lot of citizens that call us and tell us, "Did you know?" Because they know that they're not supposed to, that they're supposed to have a permit.
Okay, so they do.
People that call quite a bit that say, "Just so you know, somebody calls so-and-so, or this gentleman's selling books, or."
And I know that John Sherman will deal with it.
That's good to hear. Yeah, good.
To inform us.
Okay, you know, I'm just trying to protect the public.
Comment about the whole first page of the fees, the business license fees. And that is, it's broken down by, one category is rentals, real estate, professional services, retail and real estate. One of them is manufacturers, wholesalers, they pay a lot less based on their income than do the retail services. And then contractors and subcontractors are sort of in between. But basically, retail and professional services have a much higher rate based on their revenue that they pull in. And I suppose this is standard from other jurisdictions. I don't know. But I've never seen a rationale for why that is. I am particularly concerned about our retail community and not having them bear more of a burden than is fair, where wholesalers and manufacturers may not be paying their fair share. I don't know. It concerned me.
Typically, wholesalers and manufacturers don't have a markup like retail does. So I'm sure that that was a thought process. But this goes back ages, so I can't tell you where it came from exactly.
It might also be hard to, when somebody comes in with a business license, to, where do you fall in this category? I mean, there's some businesses that are both. Obviously, we have a big mix of different kinds of businesses here. I'm thinking like Bountiful Gardens, they have a little retail, but they also are mostly, you know, I mean, there's spare time. All of these businesses have maybe a mix of different uses, and how do you even figure it out? But it does, it seemed to me a little not balanced. We'll check into that.
Speaking of that, what is the difference between, let's say, it says retail or professional services or real estate, and then manufacturing wholesale, and then contractor subcontractor? And it's, let's just use fifty thousand as the part. And if you're, the first section, which is a retail sales, is seventy-six dollars is the way I interpret it. But if I'm a wholesaler, is that wrong or right?
That's right.
But if I'm a wholesaler for fifty thousand, I only have to pay seventeen dollars.
That's my point.
Nothing steep.
I don't understand that.
But don't you think that wholesalers do larger volume than retailers do, though?
No, if it's a larger volume, then it's more money. I'm just saying, just one item down the line, you go fifty thousand, fifty thousand, you're making fifty thousand to seventy-four thousand. And it costs you, on a retailer, it costs you seventy-six dollars. And if I'm on wholesale, it's cost me seventeen. And if I'm a subcontractor, it costs me seventeen also. But if I'm a wholesaler and I make more money, then there's a scale that gives me more. I'm just using one item across, and I just wanted to know, how come that a retailer has to pay seventy-six dollars? But if I said that my house, my place was a wholesaler, I'd only pay seventeen?
And a wholesaler doesn't get up to that number until they're selling six hundred thousand?
Say what again?
A wholesaler doesn't get up to that amount of quarterly fee until they're dealing six hundred thousand. So a small retailer at fifty thousand is paying the same thing that a wholesaler is paying for a six hundred thousand dollar.
Okay, you really lost me. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just reinforcing what you said. There's an inequity there where a retail store is paying seventy-six dollars a quarter for fifty thousand dollars worth of business, and a wholesaler is only paying seventeen. But that wholesaler, if he's doing lots of business, he won't get charged seventy-six dollars until he's over five, six hundred thousand. Anyway, it's just the same point.
I understand that. I'm just saying, you know, I just don't understand that.
Well, there is another factor at work here. As someone pointed out, retailers typically mark their merchandise to, and now I know it's two and a half times, so there is a profit margin there. And their overhead cost is probably nowhere as near as high as manufacturers or wholesalers because a manufacturer has all this equipment that they have to support, the utilities. A wholesaler has huge amounts of material, of product that they have to lay out money for. So it could probably be, and this is all based on gross receipts, not profit margin.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm not sure, but I mean, I've been in manufacturing for like thirty years. And typically, in a manufacturing company, if you're doing twenty percent profit, twenty, twenty-five, you're doing pretty damn well. So their margin is theoretically lower than the retail stores, which maybe explain why that, you know, they can afford to do it that way, or maybe why it's justified to do it that way.
Okay, then let me throw something else in. So I'm a retailer, and I have, I'm making fifty thousand, which I wish I did. And it's costing me seventy-six dollars to do it.
Yeah.
So I'm a wholesaler, and I sell marijuana. And so my equipment maybe is not as much as I have.
As you?
Right, as a retailer, because I have equipment, and I have precious metals and all this other stuff. And it's not cheap.
All right, but if you're selling marijuana, you're going to have, whether you're growing it or processing it, you're going to have.
No, it says wholesale. Doesn't say grow it. It says wholesale.
Wholesale and manufacturing. Yeah, right. So you're going to be, you're going to have a lot of money for your equipment. And we're going to find this out in two weeks, I think, that, you know, you have the lights, you have the filtration systems, you have the measuring devices, all of these, you know, there's a lot of that. We're going to find that these marijuana companies that we're looking at, they're going to have an investment of over a million dollars just to open their doors.
I'm not arguing that.
I understand, but I'm saying, I'm justifying, this is, maybe justify is not the right word, but I'm explaining why the number for the manufacturers and wholesalers might be lower because, again, we're looking at gross receipts, not your profit margin, not how much you take home. And it's very likely that the profit margin for manufacturers and wholesalers and contractors and subcontractors is a little bit less than it is for the retailers and the professional services. I mean, a lawyer, how much overhead does a lawyer have? We know you guys are making like ninety percent.
I would just like staff to look into the origin of these different standards.
Because we're just speculating tonight.
About ten years ago, the city, I believe, revamped its business license ordinance, and we reviewed all these categories. I'm not sure if it resulted in the adoption of a new ordinance, but I know it was carefully looked at about ten years ago. Maybe it's time to look at it again.
And again, also, what happens with businesses that have a mix of.
They report the mix.
And I would suggest, Suzy, that we reach out to Mini Services for an analysis.
So for tonight, when we finally open up the hearing, and then we, let's say we adopt, then how would that work? Find that we need to revamp this? Would we have to bring it back?
Well, if we revamp the business license fees, I think we're talking about revamping our business license ordinance.
So that's a tone meeting and another process?
Right.
Yeah, we're going to have to do this anyway if our next announcement.
If we change the water and sewer rates.
So typically, we have an annual rates and fee hearing, which is what we're doing right now. We can adopt this tonight as amended with the previous amendments. And then when we have new information to consider, then we can conduct another hearing.
Here, Larry, you have some?
Yes. You guys blew right over page eleven, which is the fees for the water. And this is maybe just an assumption that I have. If I have a five-eighths meter or a three-quarter inch meter, do I pay, I pay for the tiers. Is that correct?
Not anymore.
What? And the meter charge? Yes, I understand. And if I have a six-inch meter, I still pay for the tiers?
Yes. Everybody pays for the water that they use in addition to a meter fee.
Boy, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, you probably don't want to have a six-inch meter.
Thank you. I didn't think that everybody paid the fee, the tier, so thank you.
But for the non-residential, it's a flat fee. It's rather per HCF. They don't get into tier four, for example. They just, they're paying seven-twenty for everything, all the non-residential.
Any other questions or?
And that's going to change too.
Yes, all of that's going to change.
All of this is changing once we get to the 218 rate study, possibly.
That we need to change the whole tier thing because of court decision?
Correct. That's all I have.
Anybody have any, up here, anybody have any questions? Someone open up the public hearing? Right. I guess at this point, I will open up the rate hearing, public hearing, discussion of possible adoption of resolution approving change of certain fees and charges effective July 1st, 2017. Does anybody from the public want to speak to this? Going, going, gone. All right, I guess at this point, I'm closing for the hearing. And then at this point, are you looking for a?
I'll move to. I'll move to adopt.
Resolution?
Yeah.
With the changes of-
The changes.
Making it, changing the page one to a two percent penalty assessment, and we're gonna change the planned unit development to a five hundred dollar deposit plus cost recovery.
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, in further discussion up here, anybody from the public would like to speak again? All right, all those in favor? Oh, that's my sister. Roll call.
House member Rodriguez? Yes, strong.
Yes.
Yes. Warrenstein?
I'm sorry?
Warrenstein?
Yes.
Stankey?
Yes.
Merrick Gonzales?
Yes. All right. The funds start.
The fees were.
Further review, discussion, direction regarding fiscal year draft budget.
So, we met in May, on the twenty-fourth, I believe it was, and had a budget workshop. We started the budget workshop with a deficit of seven hundred and fourteen some odd dollars, thousand dollars. And council gave some direction, and with that direction, we came back and made some changes, and then staff made additional changes to those. The main changes that were made was, I think I have everything. We took out the projects. There was a hundred thousand dollars with a bathroom, a restroom remodel that was completely renewed. There was-
eighty-four?
Perfecto, or Snyder Park, I think, that was removed, and-
Basically, we pulled out of the general funded projects from the budget so that we can consider a different funding source, whether it be a grant, a loan, a combination thereof, but we pulled those out of this budget.
I like that.
You like?
I like the fact that we pulled the projects out until we can find some funding source.
And we'll need to, because most of us projects were ADA triggered.
And we weren't making any headway in, in being willing to reduce the budget on, on other line items. We felt that every line item had merit, that seemed logical if the projects had to go and look for other funding sources.
Well, I did my little spreadsheet thing again, and, and I'd like to go over some of these things. I shared this with Adrian and Suzie, I assume.
We saw that.
You saw that. And, and what I did, I didn't share, I guess you didn't share it with the rest of the council. So, this is gonna be all new stuff to you guys. Under fund number ten oh one, council clerk, when, when we had the budget workshop, we had taken out the tax fund for three thousand dollars, and now it's back in again. How come?
You asked me to put those back in.
Did we? I, I don't recall. I mean, I kinda thought we-
We had discussion about it.
Yeah.
And then after discussion, I believe we did put them back in.
Okay, I, you know, I wasn't, okay. Under information technology, we added another two hundred dollars for website hosting that wasn't in there before.
Right.
So is there a reason why it wasn't in before and now it's in?
Yeah, we got the invoice.
You have to open the mail, huh? Okay, going down to ten eleven code enforcement, there's, I, I think we discussed that we're gonna need some extra help.
Yes.
You know, especially if we, if we pass the marijuana ordinance, and we talked about getting help for the planning department, and that's in there. But, but I don't see anything in, in the code enforcement.
And the reason for that is, is we are, we wanna have an ordinance adopted, because once we adopt that ordinance, we will have a much better idea of what type of revenue we, we may be looking at, and we want that to drive the, the, the extra code enforcement help.
Okay, good, so, so we will, at some point after we adopt, I assume, you know, soon we adopt the marijuana ordinance, we will revisit the budget and deal with those things?
That's correct, yeah.
And we put the Calvo education package again, and we added more money to dues and subscriptions under all departments. One of the things that I did with this spreadsheet was I took the budget as it was laid out, and I went through, you gotta be lucky you don't live with me, because I, I get, I get weird about some of these things. But I, I went through all of the accounts, and, and I looked at everything below the payroll. You know, in, in the budget, you have the big payroll thing with, you know, wage and benefits. And then you have the section below it, that's called, I don't know, parts and pieces or something. And I listed all of them, and I put down what was the, the department of record, the, the department requisition. And I've been working with budgets in the private sector for years, and, and I know that our department heads are not padding the budget. It used to be in the good old days, you put a lot of extra money in there, cause you know it's gonna be taken away, and that was the standard. But I, I am fully confident that's not happening now. But I also know that if you look at the numbers, a lot of them are round numbers, and, which means they can't be precise. Now, some of them are precise, because they reflect a contract or purchase of something, so, you know, so those numbers are accurate. But there's a lot of other numbers, you know, ten thousand, three thousand, five thousand, stuff like that, that, you know, they're rounded off. There's no way that a department head can look at their, at this line item and say, well, I'm gonna spend five thousand dollars on this thing. It's an estimate. It's gonna, it's close enough. So what I did is I, I took the department requisition, and I made three separate columns, what the number would look like for each one of these line items, if you reduce it by ten percent, fifteen percent, and twenty percent. And, and again, it's arbitrary numbers. So, just for the heck of it, if you take ten percent off of all of these items, we're gonna save another hundred and fifty, fifty-eight thousand dollars. If we take twenty percent, I'm sorry, fifteen percent, it'll be two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. If we take twenty percent off of all these line items, it'll reduce the budget by almost three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Now, I real, again, like I said, I just did it across the board, I didn't bother looking into each one of them to see if we can actually reduce them. But I just wanna point out, it seems to me that if we take that kind of a look at all of these line items, and say, what is, what happens if we take off ten, fifteen, or twenty percent of this number just arbitrarily? What are we gonna look like?
Okay, so, when I went through the budget the first time, I went through and I took the highest of the last two years, and I moved either the department request that they're asking, or the department request of the last two highest years. And you in particular said I shouldn't go through and just arbitrarily reduce the, reduce those numbers. And I was trying to explain to you that I took the highest of the last two years, and I didn't think that this would be a year to spend more.
And, and, and I get that, and I get that, but, you know, when I'm looking at this, you know, almost four hundred thousand dollar deficit, you know, there's a big goal. And, and, and I'm, I'm looking at the, there is potential to bring extra money in over time, but still, that's a, that's a big chunk of money to, to say, yeah, let's, let's pass this one. Part of the, part of the process of doing a budget is to be, no, I won't say that word, is to be difficult. You know, that's our, that's our job up here. Our job here is to respect and, and support staff and everything you guys are doing, and, and I do, I absolutely do. But we also, you know, have a responsibility to not spend any more money than we have to. And sometimes you just have to say, you know, you can't have this, or you have to cut your, your, your budget by X percent or something. Just, just do it. It's just gotta be done. And I've always felt that, I mean, I, I've always approached these, I, I look at the big chunks first, because, you know, that, that's where you can affect the biggest change. So you look at the, these items that have the biggest amount of money, and see if you can shave that a little bit. And a lot of times, you, you can't, well, you did with, with two big items. But all these little items, if you take ten, fifteen, twenty percent off of a hundred line items, that's a lot of money.
Ron, are you saying all of the services and supplies chunks all the way through the budget? Is that what you're doing? The entire, all of that?
Yeah, yeah.
And okay.
And so, so what I did is I, I, I didn't really account for whether or not we could actually reduce any of those numbers.
I understand.
But, you know, it's just one of those things, and this is something we used to do in the private sector, you know. You have a budget of X number of dollars, what happens if, what does it look like if we take off ten percent? Just take it off.
Well, it's gonna look good until you're trying to conduct business, or the city's trying to do business every day, and you say, you know what, Kathy, we can't apply a paperclip this document. We're on a budget.
You know, Ron?
Well, but unfortunately.
There, there will be repercussions.
Yeah, absolutely.
And when you have a budget that's already skinny, it's easy to just say, let's take ten, ten or twenty percent off, in theory. But when you're, but when the city's business needs to be conducted every day, I'm concerned that that ten or twenty percent can mean the loss of a revenue, which can mean more than the cost of a paperclip, for example.
So let's examine that. Let's say, you know, to get, without getting too specific, and I, I'm not sure we're talking about paperclips. I think we're talking about, you know, the gasoline charge. I mean, for example, what happened in here is under field operations, police department, we added another officer, but I'm, I'm looking at the number, and it's not a full officer, so I guess you're assuming it's gonna have it sometime into the budget year.
Correct.
So, so with that, you also add ancillary costs. But we've added ten thousand dollars for vehicle operations, fifteen hundred dollars for medical services, thousand dollars for investigation, thirty-four hundred dollars for training, and fifty-two hundred dollars for safety.
So those are the numbers that I have reduced.
No, they're back in. These are the numbers-
I put those back in because you said I shouldn't do that. You told me to put those back in.
Okay, all right, okay, so I'm taking another-
It was balanced when I wanted.
I'm taking another look at it.
Okay.
So, Ron?
And I know that the process we were going through, and, and, yeah, I mean, this is a process. And, and, you know, that's why you get the big bucks to deal with crazy people like me. But, you know, I mean, that is the process, you know, take it away, put it back in again, and I got, truthfully, when, when I said, put these things back in again, I mean, that was a big gut check. But I had the absolute faith that you guys were so good with numbers that you could make it work. And you did, you really did, but I'm, I'm just trying for a little bit more.
So, Adrian, and, and I'll be honest with you, I did the same thing you did. I started doing that and realized, because we had the meeting, Suzie gave us a pretty good budget, but it was brutal. And then we added a bunch of stuff back, and the subpoenas said, so then I, honestly, I didn't sleep the, that night of the meeting, because that, what was it, six hundred and something was pretty hard to stomach. But I did have follow-up conversation with Adrian and Suzie, and maybe I should let, because I may be able to speak to what you're talking about.
Well, I just wanna start off by saying, Ron, you're killing me.
Well, you knew this was coming.
Of course. So, just to reiterate a few things, you're correct that staff, about three years ago, because the, the practices is everywhere, is always to pad your budget, because there's an attitude that if you let it go, you're never gonna get it back.
Right, exactly.
But we stopped that three, four years ago, and we said, we've got to work together and, and come up with a very realistic budget based on our real numbers and, and needs. And so I'm very proud of staff, you know, year after year, of, of doing that difficult work and shaving everything they can. We are at the point that we can't cut anymore, and so really, it's about cutting services. It's not about cutting paperclips or, you know, other things. It's about, it's come down to, if you wanna cut further, that's fine, but it's gonna have to be in the way of services.
Yeah.
And what I said at the, at the budget workshop is, we have some very promising revenue indicators on the horizon, so I'm very concerned that we're gonna be so focused on this number right now, that we're gonna lose sight of the bigger picture. And now's not the time to lose sight of that. And so what I would recommend tonight, and this isn't for adoption tonight, but for your consideration, is that we adopt the budget as it's presently being presented as a work in progress, and that the finance committee will convene monthly to work with myself and, and our finance director to just continue working on the budget in terms of, you know, revenue, and if there are things that we can cut, just keeping a much closer eye on it at the council level than, I mean, I, there's nothing that I can fault staff with in, in our budgeting.
Me neither.
We have managed our scarce resources very well, but we took a really big hit, and, and we knew that, knew that was coming. Right now, we've gotta stay focused on what can we do to generate revenue. If, if we're gonna be asked to cut this even further, then you really need to decide which services you wanna cut.
Okay. Just, just for the record, you know, like I said, I know you're not padding it, and I don't wanna cut. I almost said, I don't wanna cut services. I don't, but sometimes, you know, there are sacrifices that have to be made. What's interesting to me is that this is probably some of the most important stuff we talk about all year long, and typically, the room is empty. So when you talk about cutting services, hey, it might be a wake-up call. It, it might be a notification to the public that, you know, we're taking your money seriously, and sometimes we have to cut our services to you. I don't advocate that, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility. However, on the other side of that thing, I am to, 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 to your point that we're looking at opportunities. I know what those opportunities are, we've talked about them. I fully agree that it, it looks probably more optimistic than I ever remember it looking in the past. So I'm, I'm confident we're gonna cover this, and we're gonna be fine by the end of the year, fiscal year. But I just, you know, just need to give it that one more shot.
You want, Ron, and I guess, what, the reason, I didn't mean to cut you off, because I think your energy, I think, needs to continue. I think what I, my conversation with Adrian and Suzie was that if I were managing a, I don't know, a flood, we would engage in basically meeting strategy planning sessions to deal with that crisis. And this is a budgetary crisis that we have to deal with. And part of what I found from our last meeting, the reason it was hard to nail it down, is there were a lot of unknowns that are still coming in. And because there's a little bit of a moving target there, that I thought that if we addressed this as a the finance committee, and then brought it back to the council, and that way we can update the council monthly as to what, what's happening, so that, as opposed to just kinda waiting till next May, we, we'll continue our, our finger on the pulse, so that we have an idea. I'd rather be thinking, by the time we get to the mid-year budget review, that, hey, it's looking a lot better, or, hey, I think we need to start splashing. No, I mean, I, my big concern, obviously, at six hundred plus was- No, I mean, my big concern, obviously, at six hundred plus was that if we adopted that budget, we would be looking at layoffs next year guaranteed. My concern is that if we address it and we continue addressing it, then I think it sends a message out there to staff, to the public, to ourselves, that it's an ongoing problem and we're dealing with it. And it gives us all a chance to weigh in as we go along, 'cause there may be, and I guess my experience at the police department was, I would love to hire that officer, you know, when they gave me that officer, but then reality set in and maybe we test and nobody fit the profile this time or passed the test. And even though I could hire on July 1st, I sometimes didn't end up hiring till October 1st, just because that was the reality. And I think it's the same in other departments, whether it's, I'm budgeting to buy that car or I'm budgeting for that piece of equipment that doesn't necessarily come in. Some of those unknowns that we can deal with or decide whether or not they're needed. And I think that if we continue with keeping our finger on the pulse, that we can all continue addressing this. 'Cause I think it's important enough that, I gotta tell you, when we look at other things out there, this is probably one of the more important things, obviously, whether we raise your water rates or lower them or whether we pave a street or put up a sign, I think those are the things that our constituents elected us for. And managing the money is the important part. That's where a lot of my decisions are going, and I think a lot of yours are thinking the same thing, so.
I mean, it's not, look, it's not always easy and sometimes we have to do what we want.
So, I mean, I normally wouldn't, you know, if I had money in the bank and had to figure out what I'm gonna spend this year, I probably wouldn't wanna say, hey, I'm gonna spend all the money I have in the bank. I would wanna say, I can spend this much out of the bank, but this is what I'm expecting to spend. And then along the way assess whether I'm really gonna spend what I thought I was gonna spend and continue monitoring it.
Well, historically, what's been, what has happened is that whenever we set a budget, invariably, by the end of the year, we find that staff winds up spending less than was budgeted. And in a lot of cases, we get more revenue, so we usually wind up in better shape. And I appreciate the fact that the budget is a very conservative budget, that we're looking at the worst-case scenario. And so, I mean, I get all that. But still, you know, I feel compelled to, you know, to push a little bit, you know. We're down to bare bones already. If we can pair with just a little bit more, that's all. But if it's gonna kill us, you know, obviously not.
Well, and Suzie, are there other things you wanna talk about that?
There are a couple other things I wanted to talk about. So, we're gonna talk about a test well in a minute. And that test well is gonna have a budget increase already. So it's $25,000 that we hadn't planned on and it's not included in this budget. And then there's also the FEMA reimbursement that we were talking about. The staff has talked to the FEMA representatives about two slides at the water treatment plant.
Two what?
Slides.
Oh, slides.
Wait, so you're looking at money coming from FEMA?
Right, so if we do the work, then they'll reimburse us 94%. So the city's responsible for 6% of the cost, but we would be getting all this stuff cleaned up and FEMA would help with 94%. So there's two slides. They total together around $370,000 for cleanup. And the city's cost is gonna be approximately $25,000.
And this is not in the budget right now?
Not, these are, these items are not in the budget. And that's gonna be, obviously, the water department expense. And then there's a general fund expense for the East Commercial Street Bridge gravel removal. That we believe that the total of that contract is gonna be $15,000. And so the city's portion of that is gonna be $900 that needs to be added to the.
So is any of this stuff reflected in the budget?
None of these things are reflected in this budget.
Okay, so I'm looking at the summary of working capital for 1718. And right now, we're showing a loss of $389,747, and you're saying that's gonna freeze slightly.
Right.
But we're still looking, we're also looking at the ending working capital next June, next year, of almost 1.5 million. And again, that'll be reduced slightly, but probably not by, I didn't add the numbers you're throwing, but you're probably looking 50,000, 100,000, something like that reduction in addition, roughly.
To the general fund?
The ones you just threw.
Oh, those are water.
That wouldn't be general fund, right, right, right.
Right, right.
Okay. So, and what is that, like 30, 40%, 34% basically?
For our general fund reserve.
Yeah.
35%.
25?
35.
35, okay, so we're still, that's, that's, that's.
That's our target.
That's what we said, okay.
Yeah.
So, sorry, Ron, Larry had a question.
I have, the thing that keeps bothering me is that everybody says all of this stuff is on the horizon. How soon is the horizon? And I am not one that spends the money if I know that it's not coming in. And I'm for Exhibit B, which is bare, bare bones. And then when money starts coming in, then we start going and adding things that we need, but we have, know that we have the money to do it. We're, we knew this is coming and we've known it for three or four years that it was coming. And, you know, we're still up at $300,000. And I think that we oughta get back to re, and I know that this is gonna be hard and it's gonna be really difficult for us to do it. But I think that we oughta know and have the money in hand before we start committing to things. I mean, none of us, I hope, run our house the same way, because you couldn't do it that way. And so I'm for bare bones.
So, you know, what that equates to is you're gonna have to lay off staff. And if you don't have staff, you're not gonna realize the projects that are gonna bring the revenue in.
Okay, if that, that's your way of thinking. I'm just, I stated how I felt and that's how I feel.
There's at least, at least one or two additional staff reflected in this budget. We have the assistant to the planning department.
Well, you have an extra officer.
An extra officer.
Well, it's not, okay, it's not an extra officer, right? But it's an officer more than what they have right now.
But less than what they're actually, we're on.
They can't continue to function like they are.
So I just wanna make sure that that's clear, that they haven't asked for an additional officer. This is one that hasn't been filled.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that there's at least one example in here that's about $100,000 when you add in the benefits and everything for an administrative assistant that theoretically, we could say, let's wait until we actually have a six-month backlog and everything.
There's no way you could convince me that we're gonna give up that officer.
No, not the, I'm talking now about the administrative assistant for the planning department. And I, I have some of the same ambivalence that Larry's saying, is, you know, we could wait a few months and see if we really have a realistic prospect of increased revenues coming in. But I also feel like, in order to process the permit so that you have the revenue coming in, we may just need to bite the bullet and do that administrative assistant. But, you know, yeah, but we can't, you know, not have insurance and not have training and not have a police force and not have a, you know, I mean, we already, already, already bare bones. So if we, you'd have to give up something like that in order to cut this substantially.
If you don't have a plan for the future, you don't put things in place, you don't have somebody to help with the planning, how do we expect to drive in revenue? Like, as a business owner, yes, you get down to the bare minimum, but then you can't keep saying, well, I need to bring in revenue or I gotta cut, cut, cut. 'Cause I can tell you, you're gonna be out of business tomorrow. You have to be willing to also work harder and invest and risk a little so that you can create a brighter future. And we're, the city is going to have to work harder to drive in revenue. And I don't think that slashing is the answer. We're gonna have to invest. And I get that that's a little risky. I mean, like Jerry, I didn't sleep well either and I'm very nervous about it too. But I don't think that slashing services for our community is the answer. When I came on board, I saw that we had a reserve of 52%. And I asked Adrian, I said, what is the recommended? And the recommended, considering what the city was, had coming up, was 35%. We're talking about after this budget, 35%. Do we wanna continue down this road where we do plead? Obviously not. But a 35% reserve is still a very healthy reserve for the city of Willets. And it still gives us an opportunity for another year to try and invest in our community. And I think we owe it to the community to have some hope and some vision about where we're going. And I'm just not willing to throw my hands up in the air and say, well, we don't have money, we're gonna, we're gonna cut services. And when you need the police department to come in your neighborhood and patrol, I'm sorry, we cut the gas budget, so those streets, we might see you once a night or not at all. There will be impact, there will be impact. And just calling it a percentage is not, it doesn't do it justice, 'cause there will be an impact. And I get Ron, that you're a numbers guy and you're trying to do that, but I'm thinking about the reality, what is, what is it gonna mean to the average person every day if we cut 10 or 20%? Because my job as a city councilwoman to go out and see, along with the city staff, what we can do to generate. So I think the bigger thing is for each of us to say, how hard are we willing to work to help our community grow? How can we inspire others to drive their business, to bring the new business into our area? That's really where I think we'll be focusing.
And I think, again, that, again, I'm not, I'm more like Larry in some ways, but at the same time, I'm, it'd be like me operating on myself. And to say you've gotta lose the arm right now, when the possibility is I might have to lose it, but if I only have to lose a finger, then I'd rather lose a finger than lose the arm. And I really think, I'm willing to make the time to meet and go over and also work with the department heads to see if they really are gonna spend that, whatever they're putting in there. 'Cause I did ask Suzie and Adrian to take it back. I think Bruce's, I think the mandate in the past Bruce has kinda put out there was that I'll either chop or you, department heads, chop. And I took it seriously when I was the chief. And I did some personnel cuts last year and they hurt, but it survived. And at the same time, I also know that, again, like I stated, sometimes you have every intent to hire that individual, but it doesn't work out. I can't count on it, I don't wanna count necessarily, but at the same time, I wanna be in a position where we can be watching it. I don't obviously wanna, again, do the $600,000 and assume that nothing's gonna happen, 'cause I know that we will definitely be in a layoff situation next year if we do that. So, again, I'm willing to make the commitment to monitor this and continue on. And I'm not promising to anybody that we won't cut or that I won't direct that. I think that that's the, I guess that's the attitude we need to take up here, that if we get down to it and if it looks like, whatever it is, isn't working or it's being delayed, then we do kick it or we, I don't know, that's just my thought.
You know, it's not, it's not, you know, running down the hill on a sled without brakes or anything like. Like, we're not, we're not just going hell and no, out of control. There is a certain amount of control here. And I agree with the comments, Suprema. You have to make an investment. Now, the investments that we have put back in, for example, the help in the planning department, that $90,000 investment is, I'm sure, is going to translate into more revenue coming in from new projects and fees and things like that. So that's a good investment. And by the way, I assume that this new person will enable you to get down to that, what was the target, three months turnaround?
That's the fastest you could expect in application to be processed a lot of times based on legal factors.
Yeah, but I mean, when we talked about this, right now, you're looking at six months maybe. And I asked you, what is the standard? And you said, like, three, four months? So I guess the question I have to ask you before approving this extra body, that I suggested we put in anyway, if you recall, would this person get you to that three-month target?
It would depend on the workload, but based on the current amount of applications had. If we had enough staff where when a project comes in, we essentially don't need to stick, put it at the bottom of a pile, we can react to it right away and go through the process again, recognizing that sometimes you have 30-day, noticing periods and you're referring out to other agencies and you expect them to at least have a few weeks to obtain the application, provide review, again, at least a couple of weeks to process the application, put together a staff report, environmental review. If you have the ability to grab an application as soon as it comes in and you don't have to sit on it while you process ones that were submitted before, then a timeline for something like a minor subdivision or a minor use permit, you know, you'd look at about a three and a half, three to three and a half month timeline.
Which is where we're looking to go.
Right now, I think things are a little bit off in that, you know, we have a big project that's in front of the department in the cannabis ordinance. I mean, it's great that we're able to do it in-house and likely saving, you know, something between $80,000 and $100,000 in consulting fees. But with the limited amount of staff, you know, we've got a number of projects that are gonna take that six-month, seven-month period to get through. And then if we continue to take on bigger projects, then that timeline can become a year or something.
So the extra help will enable you, because you are gonna get a lot of permits to process if we pass this ordinance. And it's in our benefit, it's in our best interest to process them as quickly as possible so they can start throwing money at us.
Yeah, the other thing that happened just that you guys approved recently was the ability for us to work with consultants to process applications. And so, you know, we'll have to get into the details on how consultants select it, if it's, you know, done by staff or if it's done by the applicant. And I could talk on that further, but I won't right now. Our ability now to process applications has increased greatly. I'm actually very giddy back there, recognizing that there's an opportunity to get outside help and then pass that appropriate cost on to the applicant, to the developer for certain applications. Again, keeping those mom-and-pop applications low. But, so to answer your question, you know, if we had someone else in the department that was able to write staff reports, had experience writing secret documents, and we were continuing to receive, you know, slightly more applications than we are today, then I would expect that that timeline would be closer to the three and a half months than say six months.
So basically, this comes to the heart of what we're talking about. You know, we're making investments in key positions and key equipment, things like that, that will not only not reduce services to the public, there might be some blips from time to time, but we will also be able to take advantage of some of these opportunities that we're looking at. And we really need to increase our revenue stream. But, you know, it's important to point out that something like 71% of the budget is from payroll. So if you're gonna start cutting any, you know, making any real savings, you're talking about people. I mean, that's, that's it. Even though I was trying this 10, 15% stuff with the paperclips, essentially, it comes down to people. And, you know, I don't wanna go there. So, okay.
Suzie, do you have anything?
Nope, I think that was it.
Okay, so.
So what do we need, a direction, a motion, or what?
Do we need a motion or just direction?
No, just direction and which would include scheduling it for adoption at the next meeting.
And I would urge, and Ron, again, not trying to cut you off or anybody else, or even members of the public, if you have some suggestions as to what, there are areas we should look at. I'd take it with Suzie. Her email is listed there and council members, I guess, route those through. If there's some areas that are, I think it's a moving target. And I think that we'll come up with a schedule to meet, again, once a month to look at it. And it gives us a chance to look and see whether department heads are really gonna hire that individual or not or what the timeline is so that we can come. so that we can come back with some realistic numbers.
I agree. I have a question. The roughly $100,000 that we estimated for the restroom remodel to bring it up to ADA, there was pretty much consensus at the budget workshop that we, there was no point in kicking that down the road, because it's gonna have to get done. So is the plan now, it's not included in the budget, makes the numbers look better, but we're gonna try to get outside funding?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think that Susie brought up a good point, that even if she were gonna go contact, we met, when we met, that we talked about hypothetically, if she went to go talk to USDA about a loan, they're gonna wanna know what, you know, I mean, if you were gonna build a garage, you'd probably want an estimate from a contractor that says, "This is a firm number or not." So before we can go through some of that work, they need to do some homework.
But, but we do still have the consensus. We don't want a week and a half to...
Absolutely. So the certified access specialist that we have, you know, established a relationship with, is currently evaluating our city facilities. And once he's done, he will submit a report to us to advise us on what we need to do. And, and all of those items will include an estimated cost. And that's something that we can use when we're looking for other funding sources.
And there are grants potentially?
I'm told that there are.
I would like to give us just one final dying-gasp shot. And sit down with you at some point in the next couple of days, the week. Just go over this thing. You know, I don't wanna tie everybody up here, but there are a few items here that maybe we can sort of check about.
And I think that's very appropriate.
Would you leave?
It'll have to be, I think, next week. The rest of the week is pretty full.
Okay. I'll email you. I'll have my people.
Okay.
My people? Okay.
Consent calendar. Disbursements and resolution establishing appropriation limit for fiscal year 2017, 2018 pursuant to Article... Forgot my Roman numbers. What is that?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you. Oh, B of the Constitution of the State of California. I wasn't sure what the B stood for, but I guess it just stood for the B. And that's, we have this. Anybody want anything pulled, otherwise?
I don't need to pull it, but I just wanted to clarify, in my mind, item C is that the limit that you're, we're adopting is basically the
GAN limit?
Legally maximum limit, but we aren't expecting to go where you were in your close-up. Okay. So it's not by, by adopting this, we're not estimating that that's what we're gonna actually do?
No.
No? Okay. Good.
All right. So do we have a motion on the consent?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All right, motion, a second. Any further discussion, otherwise call for the vote? Or somebody from the public wants to speak on it? All right, call for the vote.
To explain that, I did pull the minutes of May 23rd, the budget workshop. They're not completed. We've got the next meeting. So, Kim, remember, our greatest?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yep.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
Item five, informational reports. Item six, right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to review that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Item seven, commissions and agencies. Just so everybody knows, the Willet City Council meets concurrently as the Willet City Planning Commission and the City of Willet Successor Agency, and we have no business there. And item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
If I could request that we take item nine D, because Andrea Trincata from our engineering department is here, just to speak to this item. And she, I think, started her day at eight and has little ones at home, so.
Okay. Come on up, Andrea.
So, city staff has been working on a, a project to construct a test well to look into the feasibility of installing a groundwater well. This test well would check for water quality and production. And we, we have a contract that we'd like to get approved for the construction and, and testing.
In addition to the Elias well?
It is, in addition to the Elias replacement well.
So the, the long-term plan would be, let me backtrack. This goes back to a study from a number of years ago to develop a groundwater system. Back in 20, early 2014, when we had the, we were faced with an extreme drought crisis. We were able to convert one of our irrigation wells to a well for, you know, to introduce into the drinking water. Our crews, largely our crews, constructed the groundwater treatment plant that's located near our wastewater plant. The Elias well itself is, is pretty far out north of the wastewater plant. So this well location for the test well would be in between the Elias well and our groundwater treatment system. And so basically, this is to gather information about the viability of adding another well to our system. Currently, our, the Elias well is only being used for emergency purposes only. Although, the Division of Drinking Water has permitted it for full-time use, we haven't brought anything back to the council to make a change in that direction. But we do want to start looking at long-term groundwater management. And so this is really one of the first steps to, to gather some data about the, the production of the well and the water quality. Moving past that, we would be, let's say, I think, July 18th is when we are going to be scheduling a Water and Wastewater Systems Committee to talk about groundwater management planning, which is really a long-term endeavor. Ron has delved into this quite a bit. But for right now, we just wanna get the test well done, so we can understand the viability of that. This was something that we had budgeted for this fiscal year, and it was delayed. And so it actually wouldn't begin, I think, until next year.
Yes. We were delayed due to the weather this year, and we need the fields to dry up before we can go out there and, and bring heavy equipment out there to construct the well.
Andrea, wouldn't, so the purpose is to add more diversity to our water system, is that correct? Because the way I understand, you correct me if I'm wrong, that there's the Elias well, and then there's the Parkwell over here, and one has arsenic in it, the other one doesn't. And we could dig over here, and it may or not, may, may or may not be viable. So this is to add some diversity to our water system?
Yes. The groundwater offers a lot of benefits to our current water supply. Our surface water is prone to seasonal water quality issues.
That's the algae, right?
Yeah. The algae creates organics in the water and can create the, like, byproducts from its interaction with chlorine. So that creates a, a water quality issue, where use of groundwater during the, well, consistently throughout the year, but primarily during the summer season, would introduce clean, fresh, cold source of water. And blending the two would, would increase the water supply up at the, the reservoir, which would help the algae situation as well. We wouldn't get into the shower depths and increase the temperature of the, the reservoir. So that's really about reservoir management as well.
So would this be dug over here somewhere?
It would be in the long 20s. So it's, it's roughly 1,500 feet from south of the, the current Elias well. And we chose that location because the water quality out there has proven to be excellent. It's along the transmission line to the groundwater treatment plant.
So it would be easy enough to hook up if we needed?
Yeah. We would look at a minimal amount of piping. And with the conditions out there, it's, it's wetlands. And so the environmental permitting process is pretty cumbersome. A short amount of transmission line would be a good way to go.
The, this is the first time I, I've ever seen the, the argument made that the groundwater is cooler and, let's say, safer than the surface water in the summertime. And that's a brilliant piece of information. Thank you for that. I mean, that makes a heck of a lot of sense to do this. But I, I have a few technical questions. In your report, you said that the existing well can produce a little more than 400 gallons per minute, but it supplies 330 gallons a minute. And the new well is expected to produce over 500 gallons a minute, but you're looking at about 300 gallons.
Yeah.
So that would give a total of 630 gallons per minute. And I think in here you said something like there is, we use something like 800 and some gallons a minute?
For peak flow, or peak demand during the summer.
So you could ramp it up if we're using, like, in the summertime, if we're using just well water. You could, you have the capacity to ramp it up to cover that?
The limitations are, are put on by the pump and the pressure that we're overcoming by going into the system. So the Elias well, just pumping at max capacity is capable of pumping at 1,000 gallons a minute, but that is not sustainable. We did a, a pump test and, and studied wells and found, you know, sized the pump and, and found that we're currently pumping at, it's 450, but with the restrictions of overcoming the pressure, we are limited to that 330 gallons per minute.
So, so what you're saying then is during the peak hours, you know, the peak demands of maybe 800 gallons per minute, we would still have to take some from the reservoir?
Yeah. So a plan, the, the plan that has been put forward is to pump during the summertime from the, from the well and supply for 12, 12 hours during the day, during peak energy demand. So that's when our PGE rates go through the roof up at the water treatment plant. And then switch to pumping at night from the res, from the water treatment plant. We feel that this would save us significantly in energy costs, because the water treatment plant is very energy-intensive, you know, with the demand. The Elias well, on the other hand, is, is very minimal. We're talking about like a 40 horsepower pump. And that is what drives the water through the, the water treatment plant.
But to the point that you made about the, the energy cost during the day at the water plant, don't the solar panels offset that?
Yeah, my understanding is we get a 3% discount.
From the PGE rates?
From the PGE rates. And we're, our, I wanna say our last annual energy cost of the water treatment plant was maybe $120,000 a year. So it, somewhere, it's well over $100,000 a year.
So Andrea, if we had honed those completely, then it'd be a different story then.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't wanna go down that way. That, that hurts me. But, so anyway, so, okay, so that would be the case, that you might have to supplement at the peak hours with, with the reservoir water. You also mentioned in your report that the capacity of the water system, the number of, of connections permissible, is controlled by the tank's storage capacity. And I get that. But theoretically, if, if we added more connections, that's going to empty the tank quicker. So wouldn't we, wouldn't that give us the ability to, you know, pass it through the, the storage tank faster?
Well, we have a certain amount of connections that we're authorized to, to have right now by the Division of Drinking Water.
And what is that based on?
It's based on our, our storage tank capacity in our system.
Okay. And, and that's what I'm questioning. I mean, I understand that if you, if you have a storage tank capacity of X billion gallons or whatever, and you're using, it's, it's coming in, it's going out, and you can't overfill the tank. But if you have more connections, it's going out faster, which would make it possible to put some more in, put more in. There's more coming out, so there's more room to put more in. So isn't that kind of a zero-sum game?
Well, we have a certain amount of connections that we haven't made yet, and we're, we're authorized for that amount of connections. If we want to increase that, increase it beyond what's authorized right now, then we would have to increase, increase our storage capacity within our system. We would have to add another tank, and there's a lot of environmental review that we would have to go through.
Where does the authorization come from?
Well, the Division of Drinking Water, and it would be also an environmental review. It would be like a secret process.
Am I crazy? Am I making sense? I mean, if you have a tank with, with X amount of capacity, you take a certain amount out, you put a certain amount in, and that's your limitation. But if you take more out, then that means you have room to put more in.
You also have to factor in the treatment process time.
Okay, but is that a factor? Because you had all, you hadn't mentioned the treatment time. You just talked about storage. Is, and I, and I get it, is treatment a factor? Are we limited there?
Well, we do have to have a certain amount of contact time. And that's, that's part of the treatment process is, is the amount of time it sits in the tank. But I, I don't think that the average use of the connections that we are now authorized for, I don't think that would increase dramatically beyond what we are currently using. We have a range that we've used over the last, say, 20 years, and I, I don't think it would increase substantially.
And we did increase the size of the water treatment by 50% a few years ago. We added another clarifier. So, so I guess, I think what you're saying is that the treatment capacity is not the limitation. We, we still have plenty of, of room in our treatment capacity, but it's more about the storage capacity.
Yeah. And the way that Division of Drinking Water calculates that is based on fire flows and having enough fire flow available in case of an emergency.
Okay. But I would be curious to just kind of look into this theory of mine, that if you, if you take more out, then you can put more in. And therefore, you're, you're, you're increasing the flow capacity without increasing the storage capacity. I mean, convince me I'm wrong on that, but it just seems logical.
Apparently, the Drinking Water Division sets a standard, and they want to have that much reserve there for an emergency, and not necessarily at your rate of replenishment. So you need to have a certain amount of storage just there.
If that's the case.
Currently, our system, we have available under our current permit 480 connections, new connections that we can make before we would have to seek an expansion of our system and a change in our permit. The purpose of the test well is not to support development. We actually have quite a number of connections available, you know, existing to support development. The purpose of it is really about water quality and efficiency and cost savings.
And redundancy in case of an emergency.
Well, I have no argument with any of that stuff. I mean, I'm fully supportive of it, but I'm just... Well, I have no argument with any of that stuff. I mean, I'm, I'm fully supportive of it, but I'm just curious about, you know, these uh, the numbers and things.
Question two, um, well, I, I have some reservations as well, but, but first my question is, um, you said that the Elias well is, is currently being pumped at three hundred and thirty?
It's capable.
It's capable, so it's not actually, because we're not using it as a regular water supply yet. Um, I thought that we were going to have a sequo process uh, before we authorized going from the emergency only to um, the potential to have it be a supplemental to our whole water system. And I am a little uncomfortable doing this piecemeal, uh, like, you know, we did that because we had to do something under the emergency drought conditions or we didn't, we, we were in danger of not having enough water for our customers. So that was kind of, when that got authorized, it really was truly an emergency project. And then I understood that we would have to go through a sequo process, that would cost a lot of money, but it would look at what are the environmental impacts of going to a ongoing regular use of that water supply rather than just depending primarily on the reservoirs with that only as an emergency. I, I am, and I, I feel like this is sort of another little piecemeal towards we're ready to roll with this being another water supply on an ongoing basis. And I, I don't feel like I have, um, had a real chance to look at that bigger picture. I, I thought that we would go through a sequel process and know that. So um, you know, what you're saying sounds fairly reasonable, but I, I really don't know the implications for the groundwater and competing with the other wells that are dependent on that groundwater and um, you know, whether there's a growth inducing impact and, and all that. So I, I just, I feel like this is looking at one piece without, without the context.
Well, no, actually, we did have the test. I mean, when, when they drilled the Elias well, they did run that test and they did, uh, and they ran it at full capacity.
Yes.
And there was no drawdown from any of the test wells, correct?
Uh, I think she was gonna answer the sequo thing, right?
Yeah, um, we have a waste, or a water and wastewater committee meeting to delve into the details a little bit more on this. Um, and staff has gathered a lot of information and we feel, you know, fairly comfortable with the position that, that we're in right now. And I think that this test well is really about information gathering and looking at, at the feasibility of, of, you know, whether a well there is gonna be a productive well. And I think that we have, we have a lot of information that we'd like to um, talk about at the committee level and, and then bring it to council.
But just again, sort of for, for my benefit anyway, the three hundred and thirty thousand gallons per minute that's capable at Elias, whether or not we decide to, to use that on an ongoing basis, that would already um, almost double uh, what we, what we need for a peak situation with, mixed with the reservoir. So I, I'm wondering, do we need for sure, do we need to have a second well or not?
Well, um, I think that the, the idea is to have a system of redundancy. So our, our system has a, a large transmission line that's coming down the hill. Um, if there's something that happens to that, the city is very vulnerable. Um, we have three hundred and thirty gallons that, a minute that we're capable of producing right now. That is not enough to, to supply town um, in the event of a, an, you know, emergency that cut off that transmission line.
Such as an earthquake, yes.
Um, so, so there's that piece and, you know, during our, our pump test, we studied the radius of influence and our radius of influence for that well is very small. The only wells that are surrounding it are, are Caltrans wells that are um, on mitigation land.
So basically to sum it up, um, as Andrea said, this is, this is just another um, step in information gathering so that we can bring a full discussion back to the council. We are gonna start the Water and Wastewater Committee meeting first and then um, have at least some, some report out at the um, June, July, July twenty-sixth meeting. And continue to have quarterly Water and Wastewater Committee meetings as we uh, you know, study the feasibility and how we wanna proceed and again, bringing reports and recommendations to the full council.
And as far as the sequo that Matt was talking about, so I know this is information gathering and I, and I support having the diversity aligned because I'll tell you, if something happens to the Elias well or something, the transmission line, and we have the ability um, having that backup, because last time we were kind of between a rock and a hard place. That we were in a drought situation, this well had to be dug and I'd rather, for once, as a city, I'd rather do something ahead of schedule and pre-planned it and so I, I would support it for that, but for, for sequel purposes, what, let's say you come back and that well's awesome, even better than Elias, and fast forward six months from now, would you be looking at some sort of study to say, yes, we would like to come on board full time with these wells to, in, in the plan you were kind of conceptualizing in?
Um, in terms of the, the test well, but doing another well, um, yeah. I think we would need to do um, a study of the neighboring wells and, and look at the impact of those. And that's part of, of this contract is to do a twenty-four hour pump test to gather that information.
I guess my question is, would that also include a sequo, uh, some sort of sequo?
Down the road.
Or?
Yeah, we, well, we would go through um, whatever sequo review is, is deemed appropriate at the time.
For both wells, I guess, Elias and this one, I guess?
Um, the Elias well, uh, we filed a notice of exemption based on the tank capacity and the fact that um, bringing additional water on would not um, increase demand.
Okay.
So that notice of exemption has been filed, it's past its thirty days. And, you know, we're not using that right now, but that was the basis of that, um, that notice of exemption.
I mean, having good quality water and especially in the summertime when, or the end of the season when it starts to kind of get icky out there. Um, for our constituents out there, our water customers, I think is important, but also having that adequate supply even in the case of a drought situation where groundwater is starting to, I mean, I know that everybody right now, there's water aplenty. I was watching the news today and they were talking about East Bay mud is talking about the best water storage they've had in ages and, you know, two years from now, we could be talking drought again, so.
I, I'm looking at the week's, uh, the second um, contract, your estimate. This is the one where they're going to run, run the well at the three different levels to determine where the best level is. But I don't see anything in here about a drawdown test run.
Um, that's the, the pump test. They do a twenty-four hour pump test and, and.
Is this in the second contract?
This is, yeah, this is the second proposal, so that, that's a, um, they would do the pump test and water quality testing as part of that, so.
Okay, so.
It would, they would conduct a twenty-four hour pump test.
Okay, I, I, I don't see that specifically written here. Is it implied that they're gonna do that? Because what they, what, what they're, they're specifying, no, that, that's the, the different level. That's what they did on the Elias well to determine where the best water quality was.
Yeah, they, they based it on the Elias well. They basically.
But I'm not seeing where this, where they're, they're going to do a twenty-four hour test run for drawdown.
Um, they may not have, um.
It says on invoice number seventeen dash four three five three, set up test pump and well and run three-stage step-down test in two-hour intervals.
Right, but that's only to, to determine the best level from which to draw the water. But again, there's nothing in here that says they're gonna run a twenty-four hour water test.
They, they may not have specified that exactly in the scope of work, but they, they have um, included a five-day, I've, I've spoken with, um.
Here it is, twenty-four hours, test well twenty-four hour, zone estimate.
Where, where are you saying that?
Um, it's on the one that looks like this.
Oh, that's, that's the other contractor.
That's a different contract.
Yeah.
That's not the one we're accepting.
It's uh, it's done in the four-day per diem. I can have them revise this.
Yeah, I mean, it's just one of those little things that would be nice, uh, so we, so we don't have a surprise, you know, they'll pack up and they go home.
Yeah, this was like a, an eleventh hour thing to get them to produce this, uh, or we asked them to include the pump testing and um, the zone testing. The previous um, proposal didn't include that and we wanted it to be a complete package. Um, uh, so it was right up against the deadline.
Okay, so, so you will be, if, if we approve this tonight, you'll be able to go back and get that?
Absolutely. I've, I've spoken with the company about it and, and I'm confident that we're on the same page, so I'll get that amended.
Thank you. Andrea, Larry has a question.
Is this in the sixty-six thousand dollars, is this in this year's budget now?
Um, this is in this current fiscal year's budget. We included it in next year's because of the weather delays.
So it wouldn't uh, add to our um, amount of money that we're going to owe at the end of the year. Uh, we, we have the money, we have it covered, is that correct?
Well, we did um, include a twenty-five, we increased it by twenty-five thousand above what was budgeted in the, the budget that's before you because of um, some costs that came in late. We were basing the, the cost on the previous um, proposal that we received and it was, it was um, a smaller size casing and um, it needed to be refined. So we just got the, the quote a little bit later.
Okay, what, I guess what I'm asking is, is it going to raise the deficit that we have, yes?
By twenty-five thousand, twenty, by twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's not a general fund.
Okay, so uh, the next thing, what about the Kona depression and what about the, the wells that are surrounding now within the valley? Do you have any kind of, of uh, indicator on those or how much a drawdown that's gonna take?
Yeah, based on our um, twenty-four hour pump test of the Elias well, which I would, I am assuming our um, conditions in, in this well will be very similar. We, we saw very minimal um, drawdown. It was like a negligible drawdown in the, the neighboring wells. Um, and the neighboring wells are all Caltrans-owned wells on mitigation lands. As far as I know, those, those lands can only be irrigated for uh, three years and then they cannot irrigate them any longer. Um, and the closest domestic well is like a very far distance. Our radius of influence is actually a very small area and I think it only encompasses about two of those, um, those Caltrans wells.
Uh, when, when the West Fields, when we had this West Fields uh, deal about it, we went to wells in the community and checked them for drawdown. And that was the, the thing that, that was interesting to me is that nobody really knew. There's two reports that the water department has that shows the drawdown back in the, you know, I don't know, fifties or sixties or whenever it was that they did the report.
And was that um, based on the, the Parkwell?
No, it was not. It wa, yes, it was. That was the one that was being pumped. That was correct.
Yeah, I think I've seen that before.
Yes, and um, so consequently, um, they, they were saying that the closest well, that was before Caltrans did any of their wells that they have. Uh, this was, the first closest one was at Delmont Ford's and that was the one that uh, you know, that I can remember and that was the drawdown and it was more than twenty-four hours. It was like three or four days. And uh, is that still the same thing? You're gonna do it twenty-four hours?
Well, the Parkwell, the Parkwell is um, is capable of pumping at a much higher rate.
Yes, I know.
And it, it can pump, I, I believe it's about five hundred gallons a minute.
Right.
Um, it's also located in a very um, central area. It's just down Commercial Streets and there's a lot of neighboring wells that are, are like more domestic wells. The geology of that area is also a little different than what we experienced out at the Elias well and that's one of the reasons why um, that well is, has elevated um, levels of, of arsenic. Um, the, the Elias well had excellent water quality and um, and it has a um, a clay layer about fifty feet down um, that basically takes out any of the surface water influence and just gets the, the groundwater or the um, the aquifer water. Um, so I, I believe the Parkwell, I'd have to check into this, but I don't know if the Parkwell was um, constructed.
It wasn't constructed the same way.
It wasn't constructed the same way. I think it was.
Because what they did on the Elias well is they took different stratus and where it wasn't good, that they blocked that stratus off.
Yeah, they screened, they did blank screens and.
So they answered my question. Twenty, it's twenty-five thousand more this year than it was last year?
Um, it, yes, twenty-five thousand, because we budgeted a hundred thousand last year and this year we're asking to increase it by twenty-five.
So we're just approving, if they approve it, we're approving for sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars?
That's correct.
Plus twenty-five?
Plus twenty-five, mhm.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's, that's an overall for the, the entire um, test well project.
Okay.
Andrea, could you just, um, going back to Matt's concerns, um, talk about the Division of Drinking Water, why they um, permitted the Elias well for full-time use even though we're not using it um, for full-time use?
Um, you know, they, they just base, I, I don't know if they're as concerned about the um, the impacts, what they're concerned about are the, the drinking water standards. From their perspective, our system is, meets all of their criteria and is able to be used, you know, as a full-time system. We have, as I said, through, through our pump testing, um, staff is, is fairly comfortable with the the level of, of use and the um, there, there's a report as part of the pump test that shows the radius of influence based on pumping actually at a much higher level than what we are able to achieve with our current pump and um, and overcoming the pressure. So I think it, it's based on um, four fifty and ours is three thirty, so, so the radius would actually shrink from what is included in that report.
Okay, but just, just to nail this thing down, because I thought I heard you say that we're going to depend on the Elias wells twenty-four hour test run for this one, but previously you said that you're gonna have these people do the twenty-four hour test run on the new well.
This, this is a, a test well to gather information, so we would do the, the twenty-four hour test and the water quality testing.
Okay, good.
And use that information for, you know, designing a future well.
Good.
So a test well doesn't, doesn't qualify as a, a well that you could actually put into service, it's just?
If, if a well, if the well proves productive and it meets all of the criteria, we could look at converting it, but that would need to go through that environmental review process. Whatever is deemed appropriate, um, the, uh, the sequo process that's deemed appropriate.
I'm, I'm still a little bit uneasy with the piecemeal approach because, you know, essentially we're drilling a well, we're finding out whether we could supplement the Elias well and our reservoir water and we're doing it sort of through the back door without doing the environmental evaluations. And just, you know, there's, you get more information first, but you're sort of, you're committing a hundred thousand dollars also upfront, so.
Well, it was something that we had previously approved in, in this year's budget.
Yeah.
And so it's just, we're at the point of being ready to do the test well.
Well, I have, I think I'm a minority on the. Well, I have, I think I'm a minority on the council, but I have reservations about, um, getting dependent on, uh, on the groundwater. Even though the drawdown may look okay, you only have, it's like what we talked about with the bank account, you know, you, you can take some out, it doesn't look like much 'cause you've got a big, a big reservoir, but if you keep, if everybody's still doing that and we're not able to replenish. And, and this is a huge subject, which I hope the, um, the, the subcommittee, the committee will, you know, come back with more information about it, 'cause I don't understand, um, whether we're in a situation where we're drawing down on the aquifer, uh, in a significant way or not.
And, um, staff is working on, on gathering all of that information. What we have in our previous reports, it's been, the information that's been gathered, um, there's an estimated, uh, sixty-six thousand acre feet in the aquifer. And, um, at our current capable rate of pumping, we would potentially, um, pull out two hundred and fifty acre feet a year. And the recharge rate is, is dependent on, um, the amount of rainfall in a year, um, and, and we're working on gathering, um, you know, a better estimate of, of what the recharge rate is.
Well, this is the sort of thing I would, I would love to be able to see that before taking steps, uh, down the road. But I, you know, I may be in a minority in that.
Well, I'm, you know, we, we're planning on the, um, the committee meeting on the eighteenth to, to review some of the, the information that we have, have gathered to date.
So Andrea, just, part of the study, I mean, it, I guess it'd be, we could gather a bunch of old data and kind of do that, but part of the study would involve ultimately digging a well, right? I mean, that's part of the, the process, right?
Yeah, we need to, to drill test wells to see what the, um, the production rate would be, um, and the water quality.
And now, let's say you dig down there, you dig just as far as the Elias well, but it comes out full of boron or something else. Then at that point, would you be coming back to us saying, "I wanna try somewhere else," or would this pretty much be put to bed for a while?
Um, I think we'd have to look at what our options are at that point. Um, we could potentially, it really depends on the results. There might be a treatment plan, a treatment modification that we could do, um, or, you know, possibly looking at another test well.
Okay.
I do feel that the area that we're drilling in is, you know, we feel fairly confident in that area.
Okay.
Uh, the Elias well was also, it was called, uh, a remarkable well by the, the well drillers. It's, they don't see too many like that.
Yeah, that, that was spitting out water even before you drilled the well.
It's an Artisan well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I saw it several years ago, and it was crazy. I mean, all that water just coming out of it, and it was pure, it was clean water.
Adrian has something.
So just like we had, um, brought this, um, test well plan to you, you know, this time last year to be included in this year's budget. If we were to come up with, um, data to say that it's, you know, we need to look somewhere else, that would of course come back to the council, 'cause it's, you know, this council, well, a different council approved the test well project. And if we needed to do something different or more, then it would come back to the council for, um, consideration.
So otherwise, the money's committed for this?
Well, it was already committed in this fiscal year, but it, the project's been delayed, and since it's gonna push into next fiscal year.
Which is twenty-five percent more?
Twenty-five thousand more.
Twenty-five more, okay.
But this is a contract that we're looking to award tonight.
Okay.
To the well driller, to you.
And, um, the well drillers are very busy. It's very difficult to get a well driller scheduled, and Weeks has been very, um, flexible with us. Fish Brothers Drilling wasn't able to, um, commit this year because they're, they're too booked, so.
So we're looking for a motion?
I think so.
I'll move that we accept, um, staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Oh, come on, guys. You can second it.
All right, I'll, I'll second it. All right, motion seconded by Mayor Gonzalez. Motion by Ron. Call for the vote.
Can I, can I ask what the reservations that like Sabrina and Larry have, I've expressed mine.
For me, for me, it's, it's lack of information. I mean, I guess I, I've read the information that's provided, but I don't have the history. I don't have the, I'm wondering, you know, from the people who sat on the council before, you know, what was it that moved them? Besides the drought, of course, to, to allocate these funds. I'm concerned about the fact that we're wa, we're raising water rates, and, uh, this does have an impact on that. Water rates is something that's on my mind, on the other hand.
Um, I just would like to say that because of this, we were able to actually have the two tiers and, and which caused a decrease. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, that's good. I'm undecided how, to be honest, I'm on the fence.
Well, just for a little more discussion, if you don't mind, thi, this, this issue has been on the table for, God, years. And I remember about twelve years ago, there was an opportunity to do a study to, of the aquifer to see exactly what the conditions were there, because this is before the, the recent drought, but, you know, as we all know, if you lived in the state for any number of years, California is prone to periodic droughts. And, and it was, it was, it was recognized that our, our water supply at the reservoir is, um, you know, it, 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 it could be in jeopardy under certain conditions. And we see that every year, whenever we have the drought and the hot weather and how the water gets, you know, the, the, all the bad stuff, and, and, so there's always that, has, that has been going on forever and ever. So twelve, about twelve years ago, the, the issue came up to the council. I was not on the council at that time. And the discussion was about doing a study to see what, you know, what's in, what's under the ground there and what impact would that, you know, just what we're talking about right now. And what we got was, and this is to put it into context a little bit, historical context. So what we got that night was a lot of people who lived in the valley who came in here saying, "You will not steal our water." But that was not a, an accurate statement, 'cause nobody was stealing anybody's water, and it wasn't their water, it's our water as well. It's everybody's water. And, and as the, um, the, the premier agency, the city, in this region, we, we do have, I believe, a legal, um.
Superior claim.
That, superior claim. So we have the right, and we're a government, you know, we have the right to take the lead, whereas a bunch of neighbors are not gonna be able to do that. And all they wanted to do was just to do a test well and see, find out what's under the ground, what are the impacts going to be. So the council then voted that down. They didn't want that. One of the comments that I heard, which I couldn't, still can't believe to this day, is that if you do a test well, and if you do a test, you study things, then it's gonna become automatic, it's gonna happen. You know, which is to say that if it turns out that it's not a good idea, that we're still gonna do it anyway, which doesn't make any sense to me. So that, that, that died until the recent droughts that we had. And I guess the first wells, what'd you say, twenty-fourteen, thirteen? No, no, it was like.
Probably twenty-fourteen.
Was that when we first opened up? Okay. And about that point, I think we were into two or three years of drought, and people were starting to get a little itchy. Uh, and, and there were a couple of years where our reservoir got down to maybe a hundred days' worth of supply, and even that, we're dredging the bottom of the thing. It was dangerous. So then, at that point, when we brought up this thing about, um, going to Elias well, well, we talked about raising, damn, we talked about, yet there was like five choices. Barta Wells came in and they did a study, and they said, "Here's your choices." And the only one that made any real sense was to drill wells. So we, we agreed to do that, again, a test well. That's all it was, just drill a hole in the ground, let's see what we got, and it came out beautifully. And during that whole process, not one person came out to protest it, because at that point, they were getting thirsty, and a lot of the wells in, in the valley were starting to dry up. There was no opposition, so we went ahead and did it, and as it turns out, it's, it's working okay. So we're in a unique position. Going back even, what, eighty years or something like that, maybe seventy years, we didn't own our own reservoir. That was privately owned. And the city had the opportunity to buy that reservoir for a thousand dollars or some ridiculously low number back in the twenties, thirties. And the council didn't want to spend the money, so we didn't do that. And, and it went through other ownerships, who finally wound up spending a lot of money for that, but it was probably the best investment we ever made, because with the drought and with only the reservoir, our city had water, whereas a lot of the other, um, places in the state didn't. Drilling that well gives us a little extra security. I mean, I think we're probably the, the best shape of anybody because we have a redundant system. So a, as, as Andrea pointed out, in the summertime, when, when the water gets cloudy and, you know, icky, we can use the water, the cool water that's fresh from the ground and not have to have those issues. So we, we can move back and forth. We have a redundant system. If we have an earthquake that breaks the, um, you know, the water main, we can still have water. So, you know, this is the smart thing for us to do, looking forward, to, to create this redundant systems that will give us water security going into the future. It's an investment. Historically, it's worked out okay. Um, there's no reason to believe that this well is gonna be a dud. I think we should do it.
Is there anybody else up here that wants to speak?
Yeah, I want to say one more thing. Excuse me, Andrea. Uh, the one, the one thing that keeps coming to my mind is, and everybody keeps saying that, uh, you know, with the reserves, and I know why we keep the reserves, and, and it's not because if you're only at thirty-five or whatever, we still have the money. My thing is that if some, if we have a big earthquake, we're out of water, because the water coming down from the dam, the water line will break someplace, and then we'll be out of it. So if we have at least a, a pilot well down here to know where we could go and drill a well, at least we'll have the water. And that would be the only reason that I would, would go back on it, and it's only gonna cost you twenty-five thousand anyhow. And, you know, because it's, the rest of it's already budgeted. Isn't that right, Suzy?
That's right.
Okay, so from an emergency point of view, I would go for it. Otherwise, I'm still with, uh, you know, bare budget bones and, uh, budget. But, you know, twenty-five is, is, I'd hate to think that we're gonna be without water for twenty-five thousand. I'll just put it that way. Sequo, no, sequo, whatever. It's just water. Water's, you gotta have water.
All right, at this point.
End of my spiel.
At this point, I'm gonna open it up to public commentary, if the public wants to speak.
Thank you, Andrea.
I don't have anything to say about the water necessarily, but who's watching on?
He's gotta come up front. Lee, you need to come up and introduce yourself.
Yeah. My name's Lee Bryant. I've lived in Willets my whole life. This is the first time I've come to a council meeting, 'cause I was watching on television, watching about the budget and talking about, you know, Larry saying, you know, at home, if, if I lose my job, I'm planning on buying a car, and I say, "Okay, next year I budgeted fifteen grand to buy this car." And then I lose my job, I don't go, "Oh, well, last year I budgeted fifteen grand for it, and so I'm gonna do it anyways." I take that money and I live on it. And I feel like the city, we need water, I agree, and that this isn't about the water, it's just about the budget. You know, I was listening about cutting people, or, you know, how about cut wages ten percent? I mean, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways, and I just feel like government doesn't generate anything. Government spends. All us little businesses, we generate, and the government spends. And I just feel like, I just wanted to say, I'm with Larry on bare bones, save some money, and don't spend it. These bathrooms, a hundred thousand dollars, absolutely ridiculous.
We're, we're actually talking about this, this subject of the well.
Okay, well, I just wanted to.
If you want to speak on that, go for it.
Okay. I'm sorry. I've never been to a meeting, and I just was kind of like about the budget, so, sorry.
Well, that'll come back again if you want to come back for that one next week, but, uh, this was the well. Anybody else want to speak towards the well? All right, I'm gonna bring it back up here. Um, and I guess we'll call for the vote, but I, I guess for the same reason Larry said, the, um, having the ability. I just don't want to wait till we're in a crisis again. I still remember sitting back there a couple of years ago when we were hoping and trying to put something together with the Boy Scouts to draw water from up there. And then when this Elias well came on and the fact that we were able to do this in-house, I thought, great, we have an alternative source of water so that we don't have to do, like, some municipalities in the state actually had days where they told people, "Don't draw water." I think that would be a travesty if we did that, so that's my, so this is.
Well, I just keep thinking back to my time on the school board, and we've got that, that lovely storage tank, sitting at the high school facility that does nothing.
That was for fire.
Yeah. But.
Yeah.
I won't go into it, but, but it's a huge, it's a, for me, it's a huge disappointment, and I worry that we spent the sixty-six thousand and there, we get nothing from it. That's a risk. And so I'm just.
Do you know why you had to have that tank?
I do. I know the, I do know the.
The fire suppression for the school.
For, for the, if we had built the science wing, which we didn't build the science wing.
All right, rule call.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Strong?
I got convinced, yes.
Weinstein?
Yep.
Stan? Yes.
McInnes?
Yes, all right. Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
Call a five-minute break. We're back in session. Uh, city manager reports and recommendations.
All right, thank you. Um, first, I wanted to let everyone know that, um, the, we had a delay with opening the pool season because a pump went out, um, last Friday unexpectedly. And, um, it, uh, was due to arrive today, and I believe the pool will be open tomorrow. Um, have you heard any different counting?
Good ideas, I'm going to call in the mine, isn't it?
Shawna didn't think that would be till next week.
Okay.
It's gonna get hot.
My daughter's supposed to go swim practice, 'cause they're supposed to do the, um.
Swimming?
This weekend, so it's supposed to be open.
Great, good. Um, and so I just want to thank, um, the school district and, um, our staff for getting that issue resolved as quickly as possible. Caltrans project schedule. Uh, I reached out to Caltrans asking for an updated project schedule, um, to share tonight. I wasn't able to get it by, um, today. Um, we are meeting with them next week. That's gonna be the Caltrans Ad-Hoc Committee and city staff meeting with Caltrans staff. Um, I do know that they will have a project schedule update, um, available to us. Um, my point of contact has assured me that she'll get it to me in advance of that meeting. I, I also asked about information about the mitigation projects, so at the next council meeting, I'll be able to share an update on that. And so I covered the fact that we're gonna be having a meeting next Tuesday. Um, this is gonna be checking in with each other on, we're, well, we know that they've already started on the Sherwood Road alignment and the sidewalk project at the high school. I don't know that they've actually broken ground, but they're, they've had their folks out there and cones and whatnot, so we know that they're gearing up for that, um, this year.
And the meeting next Tuesday is the.
And the meeting next Tuesday is the Caltrans committee-
Yes, yes. Our Public Works crew has been prepping for Frontier Days. They have a lot of work to do to get everything looking up to snuff. Because our sweeper is very temperamental, we have reached out to a couple of agencies that have sweepers to see about getting them to come up and help us with that task so that everything's looking good for Frontier Days. And then lastly, last Friday morning, city staff and myself met with FEMA officials and CalOES officials for a site visit to look at four areas that we had storm damage from the January storms, where we are seeking federal assistance to mitigate those problems. So, we had two slides on the watershed maintenance road. One of them looks like it's a sure bet to get funded, the other one probably not. We had a road washout on a maintenance access road north of our Public Works corporate yard. And that one looks like it'll get funded. And then the bridge on Commercial Street, East Commercial Street at Lenore, there's quite a bit of gravel buildup under the bridge, and that's caused problems. And so that looks like that's likely to get funded as well. The gravel that is extracted from there will move over to our corporate yard and be put to use in different ways. So, it's been, I would say, a long process so far, but a very efficient process in dealing with CalOES and FEMA with information that they put out initially if we wanted to submit application for assistance. And then they were here for a scoping meeting a few weeks back. And then Friday was the site visit to, so they could actually survey and take photographs and measurements of the different areas that we included in our project list. So, we're expecting to see, Susie, I think you've got some numbers on that already, on some of the projects.
Yeah, that we talked about earlier. One was the two slides at the water treatment plant. One was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and the other was a hundred-and-twenty thousand. And the city's portion of that would be six percent, so about twenty-five thousand.
And then the bridge on the other maintenance road?
The bridge, the gravel removal at the East Commercial Bridge was approximately fifteen thousand, and the city portion is nine hundred. And I don't know about the road.
I, yeah, I thought, when I talked to them on Friday, they did not feel that the, one of the slides on the watershed maintenance road was going to get funded. So, maybe that's related to the other road. So, we're just encouraged that that process is moving along.
And where's this money coming from again?
FEMA.
Oh, okay.
What about the water people with the, taking the-
The Conservation Corps? That is not going to get funded. We were notified by Fish and Wildlife back in February that there was a blockage upstream from the Public Works yard. And they directed us to get that remedy as soon as possible. We contacted the Harlan Fork and Chamberlain Creek crews. They couldn't do it because they would have been in deeper water than they're authorized to be in. So, we contracted with the California Conservation Corps. They came out and did a terrific job, but they were a much costlier crew to hire. Because it wasn't threatening property or life, that's why it's not going to get funded.
Yes? Administration, finance, anything more?
No, I think you've heard enough.
City clerk? Human resources, Beagle?
Not tonight.
All right. And public safety, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to report, since our police chief isn't here tonight, that there was a pursuit last Friday, I believe, Thursday or Friday, that originated in Fort Bragg. And the, what's the proper term? The suspects. They ended up coming into Willets. Fort Bragg PD had reached out to our PD for mutual aid. And our officers put the spike strips out, and as a result, suspects were caught or apprehended. It happened on Highway twenty, coming into town.
You know, I just want to add something. It was Gordon Logan who really pushed for the police department to get spike strips. He had always said, I'd rather a pursuit end before it came into town and caused any damage to property or life. And so it better, you get them out on the road before coming to town.
Very wise decision. We've used them on numerous occasions as mutual aid for other agencies.
So, what, they route the other traffic around and tell-
No, they basically stop other traffic, and as these people come in, they basically, they can deploy them and then pull them back out. And so, and they don't necessarily blow the tires out there. Hollow spike tubes that basically slowly deflate. So, then you can't go any further. So, but yeah, that was a big thing Gordon wanted to push, and yeah, we've used it plenty of times.
And the Fort Bragg police chief, they put out a press release, and they thanked Willets PD for their assistance in that. So, it's always nice to, you know, there are good relationships between the different agencies, and they're always there to help each other. And it's nice when they recognize each other as well.
I guess it was robbery suspects, so. Community development. Got more, huh? All right.
So, I never had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Logan, but from what everyone tells me, he was one of the best guys that you could ever meet. And I'm sure that he would be just as proud as I am for the community of Willets winning the American Planning Association California Chapter Northern Award of Excellence Hard Won Victories for a City of Willets Main Street Codex enhancement plan.
And with a pointy top, that'll help you win some more hard ones.
We're already going after the next one. In fact, we've submitted for the state award, so we'll see. It was a great pleasure to have my favorite boss, Adrian Moore, come down with us and help celebrate getting this award. Certainly be one of the nights that I'll remember for as long as I'm able to remember things. And it brought a great amount of attention to the city of Willets. We were identified as being in northern, northern California. I was surprised by how many people did know of us and had stopped in and are going to make it a point to come visit our little town anytime they're heading up this way. And I kind of want to just brag about this for just a second because, you know, there were other award winners. And they included, you know, the San Francisco Planning Department, the City of San Jose Planning Division, City of Berkeley, City of Emeryville, Redwood City, City of Berkeley again, City of San Francisco again, and then-
Willets.
Right, yeah. So, that's some great company to be in.
They should be honored to be in our company.
Exactly, that's what I told them. Thank you for backing me up on that. Yeah, exactly. And I'm also very ecstatic that we have our new intern. He just finished his second week with us, Mr. Chris Alberts. He's between his junior and senior year up at Humboldt State University, one of the best universities in the nation, if not the world. And he's already proven to be a great asset for us. And he's getting a lot of valuable experience in that we're a small department, and we skip around to a multitude of subjects and matters on a daily basis. So, he'll be with us for the rest of the summer. I'd like to give a special thank you to Dave, who owns our KOA campground, for helping assist in him finding a place to rest while he's down here. So, again, the community's done a great job in welcoming Chris and taking care of him for the summer. Revide Ed met, and we discussed the civic billboard. Again, looking at establishing a civic billboard in between the interchanges up against the bypass that would not advertise any individual business, but rather benefit the local economy of Willets overall. So, we talked about some design elements, and now we are wanting to figure out some cost estimates, and then how to pay for the billboard before we get into too much of the design elements. That might be looking at donating materials, donating labor, potentially going after some potential grants, looking at the idea of using the Chamber website to maybe get some advertising from businesses that are willing to help. So, we're exploring those type of ideas. But we've got a good group of folks identified to be on this sign committee and look forward to working with them. And not only getting the civic-type billboard, but another of other types of signs that would benefit the community. Cannabis ordinance, we had the workshop. Got a lot of good comments from the community, so we're continuing to revise that. And we will look forward to bringing that forward for the council's review at the next meeting, maybe at June twenty-eighth, I think, yeah. So, still trying to identify the appropriate SEQA review for that. Still a lot of work to do, but anxious to get the full council's review and comments on that. So, we'll look forward to bringing that forward at the next meeting.
Could you bring that young man or the person by and introduce him, maybe the next council meeting or something? I'd just like to see what he looks like, or she looks like.
Yeah, he actually works four days a week up in Arcata where he lives. And so it might not be that he can attend a council meeting. But maybe what I could do is go by some of your work and maybe introduce you that way.
Thank you. Dusty, would we be able to get ahold of the copy of the ordinance sooner than we normally get the packet?
Cannabis?
Yeah, I need to have it to Kathy, along with all the supplemental information, by the end of day on Monday, so.
Okay. I mean, if we could get that earlier, as early as possible, because I have a feeling it's going to be a lot to go over, and I may have some comments.
Well, we could probably get you the, just the draft ordinance itself.
No, I've seen that. I picked it up from-
The revised draft.
Yeah, I don't have the complete one, but I have the one actually on here.
Yeah, so that'd be public draft two-point-oh, and we've got version two-point-one that we'll be finishing up on Monday.
Just more time, shouldn't we?
All right.
I think we should have a round of applause for your award. It's really exciting.
All right, I guess we are on city council and committee reports. League of Cities, I think I reported at the last meeting, but I did want to point out the next meeting, I think, is in August in Fortuna. And, you know, one of the things I want to point out, it's one of those things that I think we budget for the membership, but we don't have a lot. So, there's a lot of other functions that happen that I don't attend just because it's hard to, you know, like, some of the stuff they do in Sacramento, I kind of pick and choose what I go to. But the advocacy, I think I forwarded you some of the stuff through Kathy on some of the stuff that they do for us is really important. Being one voice is hard, but being a joined voice, especially for our chapter up here, let's, it obviously swayed some folks when it came to the trailer bill that we talked about. And, you know, getting those letters and having that advocacy there at the state level is really important for us. It's a small city. I think the majority of the cities in the League of Cities are actually little towns and cities like us. And so having the ability to muster that support when it comes to members of our legislature is important. That's just kind of my plug for us staying in the League of Cities. And then, the next meeting's in, I think, Fortuna, and I'll go to that one. I mean, that's not such a big drive I can't make, so. All right, and then the next, MCOT.
MCOT, at the last minute, I couldn't go. And, but as soon as I get the minutes, I'll certainly present it to everybody.
Okay. EDFC?
EDFC, quick, give us a mention, will you, share?
Let's see, I participated, because Suprina couldn't, a phone meeting. It was hard to hear everybody. But anyway, we approved going to the Board of Supervisors to ask for support for joining EDFC and West Company, and asking for a substantial amount of money from the Board of Supes to really beef up the county's economic development presence and have that one-stop shop. And I think they liked the idea of the one-stop shop, but they didn't give us any money, or any additional money. So, I don't know where it's going to go from there, but Suprina might find out.
I think Gary probably has the most current information.
So, I attended both days of the supervisors' budget hearings, not all day, thankfully. Tuesday morning was to give the presentation. And so the West Company Board Chair, Paul Garza, who has been here along with John Curry, who's now a board member for EDFC, and John Goldsmith, who's the EDFC Board Chair, as well as Marian Patrillo via video conference, gave the presentation. I think the presentation was very well received. It really addressed the needs and the benefits throughout the county. We need, going into it, the ask was large. We had basically three different scenarios for the request. In the end, Wednesday afternoon, when they made decisions on their budget, they did not fund anything at this time. They're very interested in the, us moving forward with either an alignment of some fashion or a complete merge, but they want to see more detail. And so we're going to meet with them probably in sometime in the next three months to further this dialogue. And so there will be opportunities in their budget for the next year to make amendments. And so when they feel more comfortable entertaining that at the board level, then, you know. But in the meanwhile, we're going to continue to have dialogue so we can refine what this would look like.
I just want to remind businesspeople that are out there in the community that the EDFC is a lender. And when you're unable to get a loan from a traditional bank or a credit union, they're kind of your last resort lending. And there hasn't been very many businesses that have applied for Willets. And so just getting it out there, that you can go to the EDFC's website, apply online. Takes about five, ten minutes to fill out the application. It's pretty simple. I did it as a test, just to see how long it would take. And I received an email back fairly quickly, asking for some tax documents to go ahead and process the next step. I didn't finish with my application. I just wanted to test the system and see how it worked. But I would encourage business owners that are in need of that cash to, especially during times, you know, some businesses are hanging right on the edge right now, to look into the EDFC. They have fifty-thousand-dollar loans available per business. And if it's something that suits your business and you're looking for somebody, reach out to EDFC.
And similarly, West Company is a tremendous resource for existing businesses or startup businesses to get advice about how to make their business run positive cash flow and, you know, accounting.
Sure. So, they really are there to support micro enterprise and entrepreneurs. And really, you know, especially in Willets, help existing businesses figure out ways to, you know, be more sustainable in our current climate of, you know, challenging local economy. The idea with the proposal is to really create a one-stop shop. The county of Mendocino doesn't have an economic development coordinator, nor do we. I mean, we're a pretty small agency, but at the county level, they don't have that, nor do they have an economic development plan. And so, you know, all of the people involved in various agencies and on these boards came together to flesh out this idea that, gee, we could really ramp up our service- came together to flesh out this idea that, gee, we could really ramp up our service countywide if we aligned more closely. Because West Company and EDFC really complement each other. And, you know, not only be a one-stop shop for what they offer, but for the local jurisdictions. Because anybody that's going into business or has a business is going to be dealing with the local jurisdiction, either through permitting or, you know, business licenses or what have you. And to really become more proactive and put a more positive face on dealing with your local government when you, you know, have a business that you want to venture into. So it's an idea that everybody is embracing. But we need to flesh out some details to really sell the ask part of it.
All right, Emswa?
Well, we have bad news for Emswa, which is that Louisa Morris has resigned. And this time, it's going to stay because she got a dream job for herself. Trails manager, planning and so forth down in the Bay Area, and it's absolutely what she wants to do. So she is the general manager, and she'll be leaving in early August, I think. So we're going to be having a special meeting next week to look at the job description and decide, you know, how wide the distribution and try to include a new general manager for Emswa.
Is that creative with the JPA? All right. MTA?
MTA was mostly about operational, where they were at. I learned that their accounting system and their record-keeping system is ancient, which surprised me, so they're looking at how to upgrade to a more modern system. Larry had shared with me some local concerns over some disabled seniors not having access to transportation for late afternoon doctor's appointments. As I shared that with the MTA board, they stated that there wasn't anything they could do on their end, but rather the funds that they give to the local senior center would be... Those funds would be more suitable for that type of thing. So then I talked to Richard Baker at the senior center, and he had stated that they are already using their funds in the best way that they know how and that they're doing a campaign to raise more funds for the senior center. And he'll keep that in his forefront of thoughts. And when he has the opportunity to increase that, he certainly will.
Thank you very much for that. It's a need that we need.
It is.
All right, LAFCO, and we met on the 5th. And we had, I guess they... The executive director for that organization is a contractor. And she had a business name change, which was more of a formality, but that was on there. They had a protest hearing for the Anderson Valley Community Service District for their activation of latent powers. That was the ambulance where they're now going to kind of have the fire department taking that over. And so there had to be a protest hearing, and they passed a budget. We passed a budget for the 2017, 2018 year. And locally, there was a workshop for the Little Lake Fire District Sphere of Influence Update. And they're doing that with all the different entities. In fact, we've got ours on tasks to do for the city, but the Little Lake Fire District was there. And all this is online under Mendocino LAFCO, if you want to read on that a little more, so. And that's all I've got. And the next one is Finance Committee. We're probably going to schedule some meetings. And Water, Wastewater Systems Committee, we are... When is that?
That's July 18th.
July 18th. And Revide Ed, we think Dusty reported.
On July 18th?
Yes.
On our subcommittee meeting there, so. Ad hoc committee, Caltrans, we're meeting...
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Cannabis, I think we're bringing it back for everybody next meeting.
I'd like to see if there's a potential to meet on Monday, and I'll send out a newsletter tomorrow.
Okay. JPA visibility, no. And Museum Advisory Board, no?
Yes, the museum had a special presentation on Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. It was very well-intended. Adrian was there. I was there, I saw Ron, I saw Madge. So we were well-represented at our county museum. There were lots of locals, but there were also people throughout Mendocino County that attended even. It was so packed in there that you couldn't even hardly move around to see the displays. But it was really nice to walk down that main hall that they have right before you get to the locomotives, and you could see what the buildings looked like then. And then they did kind of like a little window, like if you were looking out a window in a building, then they put a story within it, which I thought was really neat. They took stories from different people throughout the community. And they just did a really fine job of putting it on. I was very impressed.
It was the Main Street Then and Now exhibit.
Yes.
It will be there until November.
Yes, November.
They made one mistake. They identified an ex-employee of the city incorrectly.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't catch it.
It was a different job.
I highly recommend it, that everybody in Willets should go check it out because it's just inspiring and very beautifully presented. And so much history in a very palatable, visually exciting form.
And Alison Glassy and the curators at Mendocino are really to be commended in the research that they did to put the presentation together.
All a great story.
All right. I guess council member reports and recommendations. Does anybody have anything? No, and any good in welfare? All right, closed session notice. I think we're only going to have one item pursuant to Government of Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation, City Manager. And we'll report out if there's anything to report on. All right, thank you, everybody.